Good evening. At this time, I would like to call the June 6, 2023 Stanley County Board of Education Meeting to order. Welcome to all of you that are here in attendance. It's a great crowd tonight and to those who may be joining us via live streaming. We appreciate you being here and for your support of Stanley County Schools. Dr. Lefler is joining us tonight by phone. At this time, I would like to call on Mr. Dustin List for our invocation and pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Let us bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to come together tonight as we make decisions for our students' families and our county. Thank you for Mrs. Foster and her dedication and perseverance and leadership as she stood where many wouldn't. We ask for your blessings and your wisdom as we make decisions. In your name we pray, amen. All right, let's stand for the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. List. First up on our agenda, we have recognitions, and the first recognition is the Barbara Foster Classroom Dedication. I'm going to turn this over to you, Dr. Amy Black Lewis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to ask Principal Mandy Efferd of Norwood Elementary School to please join Earlier this afternoon, we had the pleasure of facilitating a ceremony to name a classroom in honor of a former Stanley County Schools teacher, Ms. Barbara Foster. So I would like to invite Ms. Foster and her family to join us as well. And yes, any of her family that would like to join us as well, please. So I will ask Ms. Efferd to read the proclamation for everyone this evening.
All right. So Norwood Elementary School has a rich heritage in Stanley County. The school has been the center of the Norwood community for over 100 years and has undergone several remodeling stages over time. There are strong ties between the school and community leaders, especially the Norwood Police Department and Michelin, and active PTO plans events for both students and staff which also involve the community. At the March meeting of the Stanley County Schools Board of Education, Mr. David Deese spoke publicly about his experiences as a first-grade student during the 1967-68 school year. Mr. Deese recounted his memories of his teacher, Ms. Barbara Foster. He vividly recounted the first days of school that year. It was the day that Ms. Foster became the first African-American teacher at Norwood School. To mark such a momentous event in the history of Norwood Elementary School and in accordance with the Stanley County Board of Education Policy 6405, I hereby proclaim that the classroom assigned to Ms. Foster in 1967 is named the Barbara Foster Classroom in her honor. Furthermore, I proclaim that a plaque is placed at the door of the classroom bearing the following inscription: "The Barbara Foster Classroom: Couragement for the Betterment of All, 1967 to 1968."
So we have an identical plaque to the one that has been placed outside of the classroom for Ms. Foster to take home with her so that she can tell this story to all who come to visit her. It's wonderful. Thank you so much. Ms. Foster, would you like to say anything?
Thank you so much for your time and for your appreciation of honoring me.
Yes, ma'am. It has been our honor. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Would we like to do a quick picture?
Yes.
Okay. How would you like to do that?
Well, board members, I know that we've already been at this dedication today, but I can't hug you enough. So I think we're all going to come down there and hug you one more time, Ms. Foster. Thank you.
Ms. Foster, would you come to the center? Absolutely. If you'll kind of hold your plaque right here. Family, if you can kind of come on both sides of her. If we can do that. Would you like to come on over to this side? There are family members in here. Yes, you can. Let's make sure everybody can be seen. Okay, we can't see the ladies in the room.
Come on up here.
There we go. Come on right up. Yes. Is that there? Is that there? Ms. Foster. Hold on, board members. We're going to shake some hands and hug.
We appreciate y'all so much. Thank you. Oh, my goodness. Letting us honor her. Well, we... I haven't known her long, but I love her. Thank you so much. I know. She's a sweet lady. You take care of yourself, okay? And I know these people will take care of you. Yes, they will, won't they? Yes. Wish we could see you again. That's awesome. I like to see that. It's so sweet. Thank you so much. We appreciate all of you for those things.
Okay, sister and sister. All right. What did you retire from? You went towards money, was that? No, nobody makes money in education. It's kind of a joke. Very nice to meet you. All right, all right. Thank you so much. Yes, very much. Yes. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Hi.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Darryl Foster Davidson, and I am Ms. Foster's nephew. I've heard a lot of stories about a lot of people here, so it's been a pleasure to actually attach faces and names to the stories that I heard throughout my years growing up. I want to first, on behalf of our family, we want to personally thank everyone who helped plan the naming of the Barbara Foster Courage Classroom. We are overwhelmed with this excitement. This was an enormous event for our family to put together to get her here, and we didn't mind doing it because it was such a heartwarming event. This, listening to Barbara when I was growing up talk about Norwood and some of the people here really gave me an enduring feeling of family and closeness and togetherness. A lot of people that she worked with, we saw in our home. They came to visit us when my grandfather passed, her father. We felt a warm embrace from the Norwood-Albemarle community. And once again, we just want to thank you for taking care of her while she was here, making sure that she came home to us safe every weekend, and that she, you know, I want you to know that she really appreciates the kindness and the opportunity that you guys showed her during this time when she was teaching, that she was able to be able to help you and help your family, help your children, and everyone grow and prosper. And that's pretty much all I had to say, it was kind of a loss of words for everything. I actually had a speech written, but I don't even want to get into that because this just took over speech because it was just so much emotion in the room, and y'all showed us so much love today. And once again, like I said, thank you so much on behalf of our family, and we wish you the best. And Barbara, definitely wish you the best. Thank you.
Thank you. We enjoyed being at Norwood today. We enjoyed meeting your family and especially meeting Ms. Barbara Foster. I think Mr. David Deese is back in the audience, is he? Mr. Deese, you started all of this when you came and spoke to us, and it was, that was so touching. And are there some classmates of yours in the audience? Are there any classmates? I wasn't sure. We met so many of them today, yes. I want to thank you for bringing this to the board. And then I also want to thank Dr. Amy Black Lewis for putting all of this together and the wonderful reception that we had today, the dedication we had today, the Norwood community, just everyone involved, and what a sweet, sweet family you have. And no wonder you do because Ms. Foster is special. She is so sweet and touched a lot of lives, and we appreciate her. Thank you.
Next on our agenda are our retirees that we are honoring. So I'm going to turn this over to you, Dr. Dennis.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. We'll have Ms. Wood come up on me. We had a reception earlier, got a little busy before. I hate that you didn't get to speak to everyone, but had a real good group, had some laughs, some old stories, you know, and some goodbyes, and it was a really special time. So, Ms. Wood, if you want to, we're going to honor our retirees.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and our viewing audience. It is with great pleasure that tonight we recognize our dedicated employees who have retired within the past 10 months from Stanley County Schools. It's often said that it takes a village to raise a child. That is especially true when it comes to educating children from early childhood to high school. We thank you all for serving the students and families of Stanley County Schools. Tonight, we recognize a group of 44 individuals with a combined years of service of over 700 years. As I call your name, please come forward to accept a small token of our appreciation. Yes, over 700 years. Ms. Judy Allman from Locust Elementary was unable to attend tonight, I believe. Deborah Baker from Albemarle Middle also unable to attend. Corletta Barbie from East Elementary. Jackie Barrett from Baden Elementary unable to attend. Lisa Blaylock from South Stanley Middle unable to attend. Darlene Burlison from South Stanley Middle. James Burns from North Stanley Middle unable to attend. Tina Carter from North Stanley High School. Jennifer Clodfelter from Indy Elementary unable to attend. Amy Cord from Central Elementary. Scott Crisco from North Stanley High School unable to attend. Laura Croats from Millingport Elementary. Helen Davis from Ridgefield Elementary. Mary Eisenberg from Albemarle High School unable to attend. Barbara Udi from East Elementary unable to attend. Randall Fike from West Stanley High School unable to attend. Pam Gray from Albemarle High School unable to attend. Ms. Louise Green from Locust Elementary. Sonya Harrington from Central Elementary unable to attend. Andrea Harrington from Baden Elementary unable to attend. David Hatley from Maintenance unable to attend. Sherri Hinson from West Stanley High School. Heather Jones from North Stanley High School. The next group were unable to attend. Terry Lambert from South Stanley Middle. Shirley Little from West Stanley Middle. Sue Ellen Louder from East Albemarle Elementary. Kelly Lowry from South Stanley Middle. Kelly Markell from West Stanley High. Karen Mitchell from Central Office. Ann Peavy from Albemarle High. Julia Poplin from Norwood Elementary. Dan Rice from West Stanley High unable to attend. Jean Rice from Indy Elementary. Terry Scott from Central Office. Bonnie Smith from West Stanley High. Stephen Smith from West Stanley High was unable to attend. Melissa Straining from Indy Elementary. Darlene Tucker from Albemarle Middle unable to attend. And last but not least, Mr. Greg Spate, we did not forget about you from North Stanley Mr. Spate had the highest total years of service, which is 36 years this year. Congratulations to all of you on your retirement, and we wish you the very best in your journey
Mr. Spate, before you leave, Mr. Spate, you got somebody up here. Mr. Spate, are you going to be recognized in the Stanley County Hall of Fame soon?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I believe, on our agenda is the Regional Sea Perch Winners Team Aquanauts.
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I have the pleasure of presenting to you the Oakboro Choice STEM Schools Aquanaut Sea Perch Team. A sea perch is an underwater remotely operated vehicle that students build from scratch. As they build, team members use real-world engineering and design concepts as they learn tool safety, technical applications such as electrical engineering, problem-solving, and team-working skills. Students then take their ROV through a series of underwater challenges designed to test their dexterity and speed with the robotics build. On March 31st, four teams from Oakboro and one team from Stanley STEM Early College represented Stanley County at the Sea Perch Regionals at the University of North Carolina of Charlotte. Each team competed in six events in their divisions. Stanley County swept the board with a total of four first place, five second places, and seven third places. The Aquanauts earned the bid to the International Sea Perch Challenge competition at the University of Maryland, the only middle school in the state to do so. On May 13th, thanks to the generosity of the Stanley County community, we were able to represent Stanley County Schools on the international stage. And these students represented us well. The Aquanauts scored their personal best in all of their events and participated in several optional challenges such as solving a real-world problem in a poster contest and making a presentation about their sea perch year to an open audience. When the final results were announced, the Aquanauts placed 27th out of 58 worldwide teams, beating teams from New Zealand, Egypt, Brazil, and China, including other teams from across the US. In their best event, they placed 14th in the world. It goes without saying, we are exceptionally proud to have such intrepid students. Their futures are bright, and they weren't even off the pool deck before they were planning on what to do better next season. I'm honored to present to you Mary Crawford, Aubrey Porter, Arabella Smith, and Noah Waits.
Would you mind starting right down here and let us congratulate you and shake your hands? We are so proud of you.
Mrs. Crawford, I think you have a STEM camp coming up in July?
Yes, sir.
17th through the 20th?
July 17th through the 20th.
You still have some spots open?
I still have a few spots open.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Crawford, for all you do and those students. Wow. Next on the agenda are our athletic state champions.
Thank you. I would like to call Ms. Beverly Pennington to the podium, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair and board members. It gives me great pleasure to recognize several state champions who have represented our high schools very well during this spring sports season. So athletes, we have lots to recognize as I call your name, if you'll come join me at the front. First of all, from South Stanley High School, we have Joshua Honeycutt. Joshua, look on up. And if Joshua's coaches would join me as well. Joshua placed first in the State 1A Track and Field Meet in the 1600-meter run. That's a long run. Congratulations. Joining Joshua is Parker Hatley, his coach, and did Coach Curly come as well? Okay, come on up. You've had a big influence as well. And guys, if you'll just come stand over here, we'll start a little run. Next, from West Stanley High School, I'd like to recognize Kelsey Burlison and Coaches Brandon Morton and Wes Herlocker. Kelsey placed first in the State 2A Track and Field Meet in the first one was the 800-meter run, and her second was the 1600.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. It gives me great pleasure to recognize several state champions who have represented our high schools very well during this spring sports season. So athletes, we have lots to recognize as I call your name if you'll come join me at the front. First of all, from South Stanley High School, we have Joshua Honeycutt. Joshua, look, come on up. And if Joshua's coaches would join me as well. Joshua placed first in the State 1A Track and Field Meet in the 1600 meter run. That's a long run. Congratulations. Joining Joshua is Parker Hatley, his coach, and did Coach Curly come as well? Okay, come on up. You've had a big influence as well. And guys, if you'll just come stand over here, we'll start a little run. Congratulations. Next, from West Stanley High School, I'd like to recognize Kelsey Burlison and Coaches Brandon Morton and Wes Herlocker. Kelsey placed first in the State 2A Track and Field Meet in, the first one was the 800 meter run, and her second was the 1600 meter run. So she brought home two state championships, and she's just a ninth grader. Okay, will the state champions from Albemarle High School and their coaches, LaSagna Collins and Bernard Henry, come to the front? We should have several members of a 4x400 team. Just two made it. Okay, well, come on up. Let's brag about all of them. So the 4x400 relay team consists of Amari Baldwin, Mary Grace Croll, Abby Clayton, and Akayla Garrett. This team made their mark on the 1A championship, setting a new state record of 3 minutes 57 seconds 16 tenths? Is that how you say that? Okay, all right. They were the only team to finish under four minutes. Akayla, Akayla, who is not here with us tonight, but you guys have met her before, also placed first in the 200 meter dash, the 100 meter dash, I'm sorry, the 100 meter hurdles and the 300 meter hurdles. She not only placed first, but she set new state records in all three of those events as well as brought home the Most Outstanding Athlete Award for the meet. So congratulations, Albemarle High. Well done. Okay, finally, hot off the Duke University softball field. Yeah? We, we have the 2A state champions in softball from West Stanley High School. So will head coach Emily Smith, her assistants Hogan and Almond, if there's another assistant coach that joined us, and the Lady Colts, if y'all will please come and take your place up here. Okay, just a little bit of information about them. This team went 31 and 1 this year. Actually, they started the season with a loss. That's that 1. So that means the next 31, they won, every one of them. This set a new program record. This is actually their fourth straight state title. There's only one other school in North Carolina that can say that they have done that. And this is their sixth state championship as a program. They are ranked number one in North Carolina by MaxPreps in all six seniors. Where are seniors? All six of these ladies have signed to play at the collegiate level. So we are so proud of y'all for your accomplishments for all of our athletes tonight.
Are you getting pictures? I know that, I know we're running a little short of time, board members, but once all of you have your pictures made, um, we definitely are coming down to shake your hands. So do not leave.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Girls, stay up here. Congratulations to all of you. We are so proud and we are coming around to congratulate you.
Thank you all. Board members, at this time, I would like to ask for a motion to enter into closed session for Personnel Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6. Student Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1. Attorney/Client Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion and go into a closed session for Personal Matters, Student Matters, and Attorney/Client.
A motion by Ms. Poplin, a second. A second by Ms. Watson. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. The board is in closed session. I would like to say to the board and to those that may be in the audience, um, we may be in closed session. We're going to adjust our time a little bit longer. Um, we will come out, um, just shortly, soon, but right now, so we are in closed session. I would like to call the board back into open session. Uh, once again, welcome to those of you that are here in attendance and those that may be joining us via live streaming. We appreciate you being here and for your support of Stanley County Schools. Next on the agenda, we have more recognitions, and we are looking forward to these, just like the recognitions we had earlier. Um, Dr. Dennis, I'm going to turn this over to you because I believe the first ones are with our ESS employees.
Yes, they are. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call up Rachel Turner to the podium, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and the board. Um, this has been a pleasure this year to do this, to recognize our subs and some of our TAs. And being the last one, um, not only are we going to present April and May, but then we're also going to do our TA and Sub of the Year. Um, first off, we have from Locust Elementary, Deanne Gibbs as our Teacher Assistant of April. Then for Sub of the Month for April, we have Clarissa Young. And I will say real quick, all I hear is good things about Deanne. I have actually never really met her in person, but heard wonderful things. Clarissa has been at Albemarle Middle all year in 6th grade and has been doing a wonderful job. For May, we have our Teacher Assistant of the Month, Angel Ochoa, who joined us this year. And our Sub of the Month for May is Faith Cobal, who has been at Indy Elementary. And I do have to say about Faith, she started off doing this, that, and the other thing and ended up being there the entire year doing everything. And then we have the pleasure of having our TA, our ESS TA of the year, and this is going to be Amanda Clark from Millingport Elementary. I would like to say with Amanda, she started out as a sub, and she was subbing in the AYN class, the Alexander Youth Network, and she stayed there and realized she liked it so much that she applied for the TA position to keep consistency for those children. And then for our Sub of the Year, this person here started at one school in a long term and has been serving our Exceptional Children programs in two different schools. When you hear her name, I have a lot of schools saying, please send her my way, um, because she not only does a good job, but she does it to the best possible. And when you are in an exceptional children's program anywhere, it's one of the hardest positions to fill, but Sanika Davis has been helping everywhere. And again, thank you for letting me do this. I know that all of our subs and our TAs very much love the opportunity, and a lot of the subs that you have met and the TAs, they have been in some very wonderful positions all year long, bouncing from school to school, and many of these wonderful faces are coming back next year to continue to serve Stanley County Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Um, could we have them kind of, once they finish, once they finish the pictures, to like start right here and come around, let us shake your hands if you'll come forward with us? Again, thank all of you so much for what you do for Stanley County Schools, and Ms. Turner, thank you. I believe we have Stanley Stars?
We do, and I want to bring Ms. Wood up to present.
Good evening. Each month, Stanley County Schools recognizes two classified employees and two certified employees through the Stanley Star Award Program. We would like to thank the Nehemiah Project for the generous donation of $1,500 to cover all of the awards. This evening, we are pleased to have Mr. Paul Peters from the Nehemiah Project with us, and I believe he'd like to share a few words.
Thank you. It's great to be here this morning, or this evening, and I just want to thank you for the opportunity to serve this community. Uh, I am the founder of Nehemiah Project. We started in Stanley County. We serve six areas within the community, folks with addiction, homeless, seniors, veterans, at-risk kids, domestic violence, mental health, and intellectual disability. And we actually started in several of the schools, um, doing lunch buddies in East Central. We've expanded, expanded our mentoring program to Indy, Albemarle Middle, Central East. We have a mentoring center that's doing a summer program. So this is our way to give back to the teachers who spend their time and dedication to helping these kids, uh, be educated, and we want to partner, we have partnered with them in regards to helping the kids be mentored and develop the character. So thank you so much for letting me be involved.
We thank you for what you have been able to do for us, yes, and for our teachers, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
This month, our Stanley Star recipients were nominated by the principals and staff at Millingport Elementary and Oakboro STEM. As I call your name, please step forward to accept your certificate. From Millingport, our certified staff member is Tiffany Holbert. Ms. Holbert is a staple at Millingport and well-known and loved in the community. This year was a challenge, was a challenge at the K-1 level, but thanks to Ms. Holbert and the many hours she spent collaborating with peers and reworking the schedule, Millingport was able to get through it without sacrificing what is best for students. When you walk into Ms. Holbert's classroom, you can expect to see students engaged in the fun and meaningful activities she has planned for them. She captivates students and helps instill them a true love for learning. Thank you, Ms. Holbert. And our classified staff member from Millingport is Ms. Amanda Clark. Ms. Clark is new to the Wildcat family this year, but you wouldn't know it by just walking in and observing because she has jumped right in and taken charge of ensuring students in the AYN program at Millingport spend time on academics. She is organized, deliberate, calm, and caring, the perfect combination for connecting with students she serves and having a positive impact on their school experiences. She is also a team player, filling in wherever she sees a need and taking on more responsibilities than are asked for. From Oak, from Oakboro STEM, our certified staff member is Crystal Davis. Ms. Davis is a valuable member of the Oakboro STEM School Team. She is an experienced kindergarten teacher at the school. She works hard to provide students with hands-on learning experiences within her classroom. She establishes and builds positive relationships with her students that are so important, especially as they are just beginning their academic journey. We are proud to have Mrs. Davis as an OCSS Eagle. And our classified staff member from Oakboro STEM is Virginia or Jenny Hudson. Mrs. Hudson joined the Oakboro Choice STEM School for the 22-23 school year and has already left an impression. Her willingness to be flexible and to jump in to do whatever needs to be done have made her a huge asset to Oakboro STEM School. She has been able to come in and work with various grade levels, staff members, and students to help provide a more productive learning environment for students. We are happy to have Ms. Hudson as a member of the Oakboro STEM School. Congratulations to you all.
Thank you. We have, um, Mr. Gray back there. Can we get Mr. Gray to come up? Oh, and Ms. Kruger, yes. Oh, and Ms. Kruger, yes. Congratulations. We would like for you to come around, please. Ms. Holbert. Next, I believe we have CTE.
We do. I'd like to bring Mandy Melton up to the podium, please.
This teacher is described by her principal as dedicated and enthusiastic. She engages her students through lessons and activities that are interesting and challenging. One of her colleagues shared, "Every time I walk into her classroom, her students are actively engaged." She truly cares about each and every student and is willing to do things in and outside of the classroom to ensure her students excel. Another colleague stated, "She has taken on numerous leadership roles, including serving as the Chair of Senior Advisors and Co-Chair of Skills USA." This year, for example, she spent many teacher workdays preparing her culinary students for the state baking competition. For these reasons and many more, I would like to congratulate Katie Love, Stanley County Schools CTE Teacher of the Year.
Ms. Love, you're not getting away that fast. Thank you. Please come around. Next, I believe we have our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Rolls.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and guests. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. Tonight, we proudly present the Teacher of the Year from each school and give special acknowledgement to three distinguished leaders who have been selected to represent Stanley County Schools as the District Teacher of the Year, Assistant Principal of the Year, and Stanley County Schools' Principal of the Year. All of these individuals were celebrated at a special event on May 9th, and some of their honorees are unable to attend this evening. However, I will call all names, so please join me in extending congratulations and gratitude to each of these extraordinary individuals. From Alamo High School, Ms. Marquita Hamilton. Alamo Middle School. Alamo Middle School Catherine Patterson. Aquadale Elementary Anna Lashua. Dayton Elementary Kristi Pickler. Central Elementary Allison Wisnitz. East Alamo Elementary Courtney Spates. Indy Elementary Kelly Lambert. Locust Elementary Jade Fairfield. Millingport Elementary Susan Henson. North Stanley High School Jared Elliott. North Stanley Middle School Luann Mullis. Norwood Elementary Joellen Teeter. Oakboro Choice STEM Amanda Yao. Ridgefield Elementary Lauren Cody. South Stanley High School Meredith Howell. South Stanley Middle School Lisa Blaylock. Stanfield Elementary Carly Rife. West Stanley High School Katie Love. West Stanley Middle School Whitney Creighton. Stanley Early College Michelle Smith. STEM Early College Erin Gardner. And the 2022-2023 Stanley County Schools Teacher of the Year is Ms. Meredith Howell from South Stanley High School. And we are excited to present a check for $250 to our Teacher of the Year compliments of an anonymous donation from a retiree. The 2022-2023 Stanley County Schools Assistant Principal of the Year is Mr. Brian Bradshaw from West Stanley High School. And the 2022-2023 Stanley County Schools' Principal of the Year, Ms. Anne McLendon from Alamo Middle School. Congratulations to you.
Thank you. You'll stay up here. I know we celebrated all of you earlier and all, but we are just so appreciative of all that you do. Our teachers are special, our principals, our assistant principals. Thank you for everything. And I'm not sure how we can make this work, but we're just going to lean over and start shaking hands. Thank you. So next on our agenda, I know that we've had some people leaving. But man, we have saved this best right here. I am, well, I could sit in this person's class forever. I mean, forever. And the students in this class are absolutely amazing. So, without further ado, Ms. Meredith Howell and her Holocaust literature class have a presentation for us, and we are looking forward to this.
Good evening. So I, they're super nervous. And Joni just asked me, she said, "How do you get over the fear of talking in front of people?" I said, "I've done it for 18 years. We're just going to go for it." And so actually, I don't want to color any of my students' perspectives by going first. And I've just asked them to come up and talk about the class and what it's meant to them. So just to give a quick little introduction, this semester, I piloted a Holocaust literature elective in person. We've had one online in like maybe 10 years ago. But this was in-person, and I have awesome students, and we've had an awesome semester. And I feel like this is one of the reasons why I had such a great year and was actually even in the talks for Teacher of the Year is because of this course. Because, and it's because of the students. I have 16 in the class, and then there are five here tonight who were able to come. So I'm not going to color anything. I just want to turn it over to them, and then I'll finish up, I guess, maybe. They said three minutes. I don't know if I can do that.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Courtney Queen. I had the opportunity to actually student teach under Ms. Howell this semester. So when I first heard that she was teaching the Holocaust literature class, I kind of freaked out. I panicked. I was like, this is not what I majored in. I majored in English. I know nothing. But as the semester continued, everything turned out perfectly fine. And it was just an amazing opportunity to work with this group of students. And even going the DC trip, it really showed me a lot about teaching. It showed me the extent to which teaching can shape students in terms of building relationships and building empathy. And just the amount of knowledge you can learn within a semester on one topic when you really care to teach it and care to learn about it. So like Ms. Howell, I could talk forever, but I'm not going to do that. So I'm going to turn it over to Eli, one of the students, so they can share with you guys the impact that this class had on them.
Courtney, I want to say something before you leave. The last time when I was in your class, I know Ms. Howell had some papers that, Ms. Howell was busy, okay? And she had some papers there. If you students remember, I was like handing you a paper, like, "Ms. Howell wants you to have this," or whatever. Courtney, I thought you were a student. I mean, you know, I just handed you one, and I was like, I think I made a mistake. I believe she's a student teacher. So I owe you an apology. But I'm glad that you've been in that class. And I wish you well.
Hello, I'm Eli Thompson, a sophomore at South Stanley. And I was lucky enough to be a part of Ms. Howell's Holocaust class this last semester. I just want to start out by thanking Ms. Howell for introducing this class to our school because it truly takes a special person to teach a class like this. And she did amazing, to say the least. To be completely honest, I was a little bit interested in this topic when I signed up for it, but I heard a nice little rumor about us going to Washington DC. And that really pulled me in because who doesn't want to skip school for a few days with their friends? But after being in this class for a while, it really opened my eyes to certain topics that I had no clue even existed. I'm really glad I got to take this class because we're able to do so many things that I had no clue we were going to do, like speaking to Holocaust survivors firsthand. And we're going, we're able to go to Washington DC and see the Holocaust Memorial Museum and other museums, which really put what we're learning into perspective because we got to see it with our own eyes. I hope this is a class that can stay around because there's many people that our age that take, make light of this situation when they shouldn't be making light of the situation. And it's a very eye-opening class that it makes you more aware of a person, as a person, and also more respectful at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Julian Butler, and I'm a junior at South Stanley High School. And this class has been important to me because it's helped me really come out of my shell more by leaving the Carolinas for the first time and reading books to children and educating them a bit more about the Holocaust. This class teaches a better perspective on the subject of genocide and many other subjects besides those linked to the Holocaust. Ms. Howell has been a great teacher this semester and every other time I've had her. She makes you feel helped and included and answers any question the best she can. All in all, this class is an important part of my learning because I feel interactive and knowledgeable while in class. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Neila Wessendorf. I'm 16 years old, and I'm an exchange student from Germany. Since August 2022, I'm attending South Stanley High School, and I'm also part of Masala's new class Holocaust Education. I really enjoy having Ms. Howell as a teacher and being in her class. She's a great teacher and welcomes everyone with open arms, which I'm really grateful for. In the Holocaust class, we all really learned a lot. It has impacted us, our thinking, and our perspective on things. I think it's a really beneficial class because not many people are really educated about the Holocaust and what happened. Yet, it is a really important event in history everybody should know about. It's necessary because it teaches us about the background and events that led to it, the events before and after, the people involved, and about individual stories, whether they were victims, survivors, or perpetrators. Not only we learned a lot about it, this class was also a place for us to expand our thinking, reflection, reading, and writing skills. We did a variety of things, from group work over reading books, having writing assignments, hearing guest speakers, and even a trip to Washington DC. Also, I will have an advantage when I go back to Germany with the knowledge I gained in this class. Obviously, the Holocaust took place in my country, and I would say that now I'm definitely more educated about it than people in my German surroundings. It will help me in the school, and I learn, and I can teach other people about what I learned. Other students should take this class, and it should be taught because it gives them the opportunity to learn about such an important event and all the background information. It's important that people learn about it so that we will never forget about it and also to teach other people about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lisa Liguone. I'm 17, and I'm an exchange student from Italy. This last semester of school, I took Ms. Howell's Holocaust literature class, which impacted me under different point of views. Because since from the beginning of the course, I had had a bunch of questions, some of which were answered by my teacher, of course, others by myself after a reflection based on what I've learned in this class. And others still don't have an answer, and they will never have one because there are something that it goes over, knowledge and skills. But that made me realize that it's okay if there's not an answer for everything, for all the questions people can have. The important thing is that to have the curiosity to ask questions and to investigate, to seek these, to seek the answers. The curiosity that I have developed during this class is just one of the reasons why students should take this class because it makes teenagers working also on their empathy. It makes them to develop their own ideas. And it teaches them how to deeply reflection on past and present things and events, analyzing also the details. After taking this class, I'm extremely advantaged when I'll be back in Italy because I'm supposed to study the same topics the next year in my Italian school so I can share it with my classmates and teach them what I've learned here, the extra things that I've learned here and we are not supposed to study there. So I will be already prepared. Among all the classes that I've taken during my exchange year, the Holocaust literature class has been the most useful, demanding, and interesting and emotional one that I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joni King, and I'm a senior. I just want to say thank you to Ms. Howell, Ms. Queen, for teaching this class. We've done a lot of things through this class. And my favorite part of the projects that we've done is our shoe project. And we got, all got different people. And so mine, she was a Holocaust survivor, and she also helped through the Holocaust. And she was a teacher at the beginning. And then like when she went into the Holocaust camps, she actually like helped the kids get to safe places. But like this class has really like helped me open my eyes because like, because like you take history classes, but you don't really go into detail about the Holocaust. And so it really has like shown me like everything that's happened. So yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. So I guess I would like to, I'm gonna, they don't know that I'm gonna have all the pictures up here. And they've, they, they pick on me because I always take pictures and they're like, another picture from Ms. Howell. So, but anyways, I just wanted to kind of take you through our semester just really fast. So the first guest speaker that we had was Karen Clayke from the North Carolina Council on the Holocaust. And she taught us about eugenics. And we had lots of group work and stuff. And so I really, really enjoyed seeing the students work hard on this. We also participated in Aquadale's Read Across America Day where we read to third graders at Aquadale Elementary. And so these are all the pictures with us and them reading Holocaust-related books appropriate for elementary school kids. And so that was a great community event, by the way. It was just really, really wonderful. Next, we had a second-generation Holocaust survivor, Fred Valfour, come and speak to our class. And his story was perfectly timed because we were doing research on camps. And his, his mother and father were both in Thereseenstadt, which is, I believe that's the one you, Lisa, wasn't that your, Thereseenstadt was yours, was your camp that you researched? Yes, okay. So but anyways, it was perfect timing for all that. So anyways. All right. We also had Oneida Ray from the North Carolina Council on the Holocaust as a guest speaker. She actually talked about the Weimar Republic and taught us about the political spectrum and how pretty much fascism and communism are very similar and how they're extreme parts of the political spectrum. It was a really, really wonderful lesson. Our first Holocaust survivor we spoke with was Margot Labrie. She's 97 years old. And this is when Glenda and Bill were able to come and sit into my class and listen to Margot. She was actually a survivor because of the British Initiative on the Kinder Transport. And so it was just a wonderful little experience to see this. She's so spry to be 97. And so it's just wonderful. So. And then this is us that day that Bill and Glenda came and I sat in with our class. So we also had Amy Clark from the North Carolina Council on the Holocaust as a guest speaker. She actually talked to us about liberation, which was something that I really wanted the students to focus on, like life and return to normal after liberation. And I've, out of all of the things that I taught, I felt like liberation was really, really cool to focus on because it's like return, return to normal. I think that we should, or I know I did, I shed a lot of tears when we were talking about liberation, but you know, what else is new? Okay. And then we also, last week, we actually ended with Zev Harrell, who was a Holocaust survivor. And he was actually in Auschwitz, Mauthausen and Edmondsey. And his wife Bernice was there to run the technology. And he was 92? 92, you guys correct me if I'm wrong. 92? 93? 92? One of them. Okay. So anyways, it was, it was a privilege to have him there. So. And then this is, so that day, we also collaborated with a sixth-grade class at South Stanley Middle School. And this is their picture there. They had just finished reading The Boy on the Wooden Box. And I invited them to come listen to Zev speak while we were also listening to Zev speak. So it was a great, another collaboration. So I've, I've been trying to work collaboratively as much as I could this semester. And then I don't know why the picture of the Memorial Shoe Project is not there. I promise I had it. Maybe I uploaded it this afternoon and it's, this is an old version. But this is what Joni was talking about. And this afternoon, actually, two of my students helped me set it up in a display case at the school. So the shoes are up for everybody to look at. They look wonderful, by the way. You have to stop and see them. So, okay. And then this is just, I'm gonna go quickly. This is our trip to the United States Holocaust Memorial Museum. And I actually just kind of sat back and the students would gravitate towards something and they would come and ask me questions. And it was actually just really wonderful. So just to see them going through this. This picture on the left right here with the, with the pictures going towards the ceiling, this was probably one of my most favorite rooms to watch the students in because they actually did a project where they picked out pictures of themselves and then compared them to pictures of, this is a whole Jewish shuttle of pictures taken before the Holocaust happened. And they had to compare their life before the Holocaust to what their, what their life actually looks like. And so they were making very, various connections here and they just really enjoyed looking at the pictures. And our, did, several of you guys, did you find your pictures that you had already looked for? And so they were actually looking for the pictures that they had done their project with. This is the shoe and then the Hall of Remembrance, the shoes room and then the Hall of Remembrance, which was moving in itself. So. And then thanks, thanks to Ms. Blake Lewis, we actually, or Dr. Blake Lewis, we actually got a personalized tour of the US Capitol through our, one of our representatives, Richard Hudson. And so this is us sitting in Richard Hudson's office and that's one of our students sitting at Richard Hudson's desk just to, you know, you know, make us feel important. And so we actually toured the US Capitol and to see the layout of the city. And then my most favorite thing about the US Capitol tour is we actually got to see our own Annie Phillips. She is a student at South Stanley who won the Congressional Art, oh God, I don't even know the exact name. She won the Congressional Art Award and she's in the tunnel going to the Capitol. And so we're pointing at Annie's artwork there. So, and she won again recently. So, so that's awesome. And then this is probably one of the coolest pictures. We actually got to go out on the Speaker's balcony of the US Capitol. And so this is our group at the US, on the steps of the US Capitol where the president makes his inaugural speech. So that's really cool. And then we just went around the city all the time, as much as we could. They were tired. I think that I could have outwalked them and that's really sad. Okay. But anyways, this is obviously the Lincoln Memorial, the reflecting pool and then riding the subway, which is a great life experience. And then the changing of the guard and JFK's cemetery, or at the cemetery in Arlington. And then us on the National Mall and once again in the subway. So. I would like to end quickly. These, I have a bunch of thank yous, but before I even go to the list, I want to really thank Bill and Glenda for coming to my class. And just, just showing up because it makes me feel important that there are people outside who want to learn what we're doing. So I really, really thank you for that. I couldn't have done this without Ms. Pahlin's support. She really advocated for this because she saw how passionate I was about this. And I, I couldn't have done this class without her support. So I really want to thank her. Jessie Thompson, she actually came with us as a chaperone for our trip to Washington DC and she was great. Anything I needed done, she would do it. It's wonderful. Ms. Queen, my student teacher, absolutely wonderful. And she jumped right in. And every single, I want to make sure that every single thing that they said is equally directed towards her because she did a great job this year, especially being thrown into it. Dr. Blake Lewis for the tour, that was wonderful. Cadillac Sign Company actually made a donation as well as Angela List, who was an Aquadale Elementary School teacher. One of my former students, Jordan Short Callahan, actually donated. And the North Carolina Council on the Holocaust, they're guest speakers and they also made a donation to our trip to United States Holocaust Memorial Museum. It's just been a wonderful, wonderful semester. And so I know I've taken way more than three minutes, but I could go on and on. And this has just been a great opportunity. It has impacted these students so much. And I can't wait to see this program grow and I hope that it's supported so that it is continued to be in this, in this school system. And I know that I'm gonna advocate for her. She has been hired at West Stanley High School. And I think that she is now excited to possibly advocate to teach this at West Stanley as well. And I'd love to do some collaborations with that. So anyways, there you go.
We, we just are so impressed for the students. This will make an impact in your lives forever to, to study this, I know. And when I was in your classroom, it was, the students were just so engaged in everything. And I mean, I was too. I felt like a student, but this is a passion that I had teaching in eighth grade literature. And yes, you are supported and I know this board supports you and Courtney. And we, we want to see this program grow and we appreciate Dr. Amy Blake Lewis. We appreciate Mr. Plummer, anyone that has had a part in us having this program and it being so successful. And Ms. Howell, you, you know, you've, you've done that. And I believe that you, aren't you going to Poland soon?
Yeah, I'll leave in less than two, like a week and four days, maybe.
Wow. So, you know, we wish, take lots of pictures. I know you will.
Oh, yeah.
And come back and, you know, for, for the students, I hope that, you know, you carry with you what you have learned, you know, in this class. I see, I think some of their parents that are here and I know that they support this, this class as well. And I'll, do we have any board members that want to make a comment?
Yeah.
It was my privilege to come to that event. And you guys really rock. When you talk, you did a great job today. So that's all I need to say. But it was really, seriously, it was a privilege to, to be there and hear that lady's story.
Thank you.
I want to say I think this class ought to be in every high school. It'd be wonderful if people, the kids could, you know, take this class and be, get their things together with what they do now. It'd be wonderful. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you, Meredith, for doing all that you did to get this class going. I know when I was in high school, we did history and FCA took a trip to DC. And I thought I was gonna just be and throw all those monuments and things. And the Holocaust Museum by far was one of my most favorite experiences. And I remember coming back and saying that. My parents being like, really? But it is very, it's just a moving, humbling experience to be in there. And so if this had been an option for a class when I was in high school, I'm pretty sure I would have been in your class. And I wanted to come that day they came, but it's too late for pickup.
You'll just have to come when I teach it again, okay?
I'm gonna come earlier on another day. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, I'm just jealous that you got to tour the Capitol. I was there last October and I didn't get that opportunity.
It was awesome. When they said that we were gonna go down the Speaker's balcony, I don't, my heart like jumped out of my chest. I don't know. It was awesome.
Well, I know who to call when I go back again.
Yes, you do.
I'd also say this, I think Bill, this is the third exchange student we've had in the last two months and they're all at South Stanley. So must be a testament to the teachers and the program there. Thanks for all you did. And thanks for coming.
Well, after listening to your students speak, Ms. Howell, I know why you are our Teacher of the Year. So that, that's a testament to you. And the students did so great. I know it makes them nervous when they have to get up and speak and, and they're not, they're not always as poised as you guys are. But you, you really did a great job and we just thank you for what you do. And students, thank you for being able to come and share with us. We appreciate that. Anytime we can hear what's going on in your classroom. And it looks like you had an awesome trip.
Oh, yeah.
And learned a lot. So we thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. You are the start of something here and we're gonna, we want to keep this going. And for your students, it's, it's great that, I mean, they, you did so well speaking. And I could listen to you speak about it always. And I think I remember in my mind what we have learned from the Holocaust never again, never again. So. Anyone else? Dr. Dennis?
Great job, guys. Yeah, I was very impressed. You didn't seem nervous. You did a really good job speaking in front of all these people. Very eloquent, very informed. And I have to echo kind of what Dustin List said that if I would have had opportunities such as this in high school, I would have definitely taken advantage of it. It seems like you learned a lot. Obviously, you represented us very well. I can tell just by meeting you today. And so again, I couldn't make it that day because I had some other things that were already planned. But I tried to come see you guys before schools, well, I guess schools out now. So I missed my opportunity.
We need to come see the shoes.
Yes. They will be there. So absolutely, please do.
Yes.
Really enjoyed it. Thank you, guys. And congratulations.
Ms. Bailey, you taking a pic? One more picture, guys. Ms. Thompson, you probably need to get up there.
Oh, I don't need to get in. I'm good. Thank you.
Will you please come by around up here? Maybe start wherever. Makes us proud of this program at South Stanley High School. And again, I hope this is going to be expanded into our other classrooms as well. Thank you again. Board members, it's been a long evening. It's been quite a long night. Let's take a five-minute recess during that break. We can speak with some that are here. And then we will, I will call us back into session. So five minutes. I would like to call the board back into open session after the short recess. Next on the agenda is public comments. In accordance with Policy 2310, public participation at board meetings each month, part of at least one regularly scheduled meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present comments. However, the public comment session will not exceed 15 minutes total, except by majority vote of the board. Our board docs deal with the timer is not upright, but you have the timer. Okay. So three minutes. We have one speaker for tonight, Ms. Whitney Short. Ms. Short, you did not write down a topic?
Everything. All right. So these are my children behind me. They ride Bus 91, which is a bus that you removed in October and made no effort to find a solution. And they are going to represent all students on Bus 91. Babies, these people on this board in front of us are the ones who make decisions for you and your education. And I want you to understand that these people up here have decided that you are not important. Every kid at your school matters except for you. They will provide transportation to every child at school except for you. They have made the choice to provide a fair education to all students at Stanfield except for you. Your education does not matter to them. Do you realize that all kids at Stanfield have free transportation except for you? You do not matter. And for whatever reason that they believe that you are not as important as your friends. And my sweet babies, I want to protect you and provide for you. But when these people strip my ability to provide for you a proper and fair education, they are the enemy. And I will always protect you from the enemy, which is why I am standing here. You have failed my children and all children of Bus 91 and should be ashamed. You've had seven and a half months to find a solution and you did not. You could have rerouted buses. You could have provided an early drop-off. You could have allowed Bus 92 to flip-flop her first and second route. And instead, you chose to ignore and disregard our children's issues. You have a woman at the Transportation Department causing these issues and you have failed to acknowledge her horrible choices. She is the reason that I even started my fight three months ago when she blocked anyone from expressing their concerns and she needs to be handled. But instead, she continues to harm the families of Stanley County. And you all have failed your positions in power and you are all an embarrassment to this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the consent agenda with the approval of the minutes of the May 2nd, 2023 regular meeting, the May 10th, 2023 special called meeting and the May 22nd, 2023 special called meeting. If there are no corrections, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? A motion by Mr. List, a second.
Second.
A second by Ms. Pahlin. Any discussion? A second by Ms. Poplin. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose, no. The consent agenda has been approved. Next, we have committee reports. We will start with facilities. Ms. Poplin?
Yes, uh, the facilities and finance committees met together on June 1st. And, um, I'll just sort of go over the facilities part, and then, um, I'm sure Mr. List will hop in with the finance side of it. But, uh, we were presented with the proposed drawings for the Indy Edition, and we're excited to, hang on, I'll give you a second. Um, we were presented with the, um, proposed drawings for the Indy Edition, and we're excited to look at those. And, uh, those will be coming, um, out to the full board, um, at the work session, I believe, uh, as an item for everybody to take a look at and, um, have, uh, some feedback on. Um, uh, let's see. Um, the population forecast is in its final draft, and as soon as, um, that is finished up, we will, um, also have that at the work session, and, um, that will be presented to the full board. And then we will have some discussion about the next steps, um, as far as the community meetings and things like that. Uh, we also spoke about, um, the new class size legislation, um, that is in the budget for, um, grades four and five, uh, class cap. So they will join our K-3, um, class size caps if it all goes through, and it looks like it will. So we will have, um, some situations with four and five classrooms also, uh, and capacities as far as that goes. And then, um, like I said, those things will just be, uh, up for full board discussion at the, um, upcoming work session at the end of the month. And I don't think we have anything that needs, um, a motion or anything like that.
Thank you. Will we know more by that work session about that four, five class size? Will we know more?
Uh, it's hard to say, because I don't know when they're gonna vote on it. It's still coming out of committee, and it's still bouncing around. So I don't have a definitive date for when that may or may not catch traction.
Okay. Finance, Mr. List?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, as Ms. Poplin mentioned, we had a, a joint meeting. Uh, we had a couple motions that, that came out of, of committee, the, the first being, um, on travel reimbursement for employees of, of the system. Um, the IRS sets the reimbursement per mile. Uh, that can float up sometimes and float down. Um, as the policy is written right now, Policy 5200, uh, and, and before I go further, this is gonna be approved on the finance side, but then it's gotta go to policy to update the policy, and certainly the board has to approve it. Uh, but, uh, each time there is an adjustment by the IRS, um, our finance department, Mr. Dudley, has to come to the board for approval. Uh, we're, we're just following IRS regulations. Um, so we would, um, Mr. Dudley asked if, if we could raise it three cents to meet the IRS cap, which is going from 62 and a half, I believe, to 65 and a half cent reimbursement. And we have some employees that are, do a reimbursement, uh, thing from maybe January, but we need to get it in before fiscal year. So the finance committee approved that. We'd asked that the board, uh, would approve it. Uh, it's gonna go to policy, um, with the request to allow Mr. Dudley and the finance department just to follow IRS regulation on an ongoing basis. So for example, if it floats, um, from 65 and a half to 64 and a half, so it goes down a cent, uh, they can just go ahead and reimburse the employees, uh, as that happens, rather than wait for a meeting or get a special call meeting for, for the approval. Um, so we, I am, I guess, making that motion.
Okay. So it's coming out of committee, um, to approve the travel reimbursement rate, to have it consistent with the IRS regulation. Um, all I need is a second?
Well, let me clarify.
Okay.
I was gonna say, it's not to change the policy.
Just on the, yes, not to change the policy. On the finance side, where the motion is to, uh, increase from the current 62 and a half cent to what the IRS is currently set at 65 and a half cents.
Okay. So a motion, you, you brought it before us to increase it to 65 and a half cent. That is correct, right? Mr. List?
Uh, hold on one second.
Do we retroactive?
Okay. So to match that, okay?
Effective.
Effective, okay. Effective July?
First.
July the first.
Because it's not retroactive.
Okay. But we're going back, because these are from the employees from January, correct?
Because it's so far, so many months has already passed, and we just needed, I was gonna ask the board to make it a date of July 1st.
Okay.
So just to make this effective, then, July the first. Okay? And again, that's the 65 and a half cent.
It's also, when, in, in the motion, hope, make sure that I'm correct, is to follow all IRS regulations.
Okay.
Versus, that's even the meal calls, hotel stay.
Okay. So follow all IRS regulations.
For travel reimbursement.
For travel reimbursement. Um, and this is effective July 1. Okay? So this is what's coming out of committee?
Yeah, and that's gonna have to go to policy.
Right.
Update that.
They, okay. But again, we've just got to approve this part.
Correct.
Okay. So we have, coming out of the committee, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, I have a second by Ms. Poplin. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Okay, this has been approved. Okay, and again, effective July the first. Now you will be able, Mr. List, to take things up with policy.
Uh, that is correct. And I'll continue on if you don't mind.
Okay.
Um, the, uh, we also had, um, a budget amendment. Um, I'll, I'll ask Mr. Dudley to expand on that in his presentation, but, um, the committee did approve it. It's just, um, state adjustments, uh, based on ADM, I think it was, uh, in instructional services. So we just have to, uh, update the funding that came in, uh, on our budget.
Okay. Are we approving any of that now, or are we waiting to you?
Do you want me to go ahead and do that now?
That, I think it's not. You want to do it now, since it's right here. Yes?
And you should have that in your, um, board doc there. And you see, basically, it's about 1.8 million in instructional services.
Um, in, in your packet, um, there's some pages that says Budget Amendment Number Two. Um, this will be for the months of April and May, because, um, a couple of months back, I brought you everything from July up through March. Um, the first page on that budget amendment, you'll see that the state funds, state public school funds is increasing right, right now, 1.9 million dollars, which, uh, we're seeing it roughly about $68 billion in state public school funds. Uh, the next page of local current expense, uh, increased slightly there, roughly about $32,000, as that's, uh, that's from state sales tax refund from the 21, 22 school year. Page three, federal funds, uh, is actually a slight decrease, um, because we had the, um, some gear funds and stuff that was actually returned back, uh, from the, from Stanley County schools because of the, um, period of September to December did not get recognized as being spent. Uh, so, uh, it was encumbered, but the state did not recognize it that we had spent it by December 31st. So that's where that's coming from. Uh, the next pages was child nutrition funds. You'll see there's about, roughly about a half a million dollar increase there in the budget for child nutrition funds. And then on the last, um, our Fund Eight funds, there's roughly $433,000 increase there. Presently, through May 31st, we're sitting at $116 million budget. Uh, and I need approval for the 2.9 million of budget amendments for Budget Amendment Two.
And we made that motion coming out of, uh, committee, so I would go ahead and make a motion that we approved the budget as presented by Mr. Dudley.
Okay, so it's already coming out of committee. Then you have, um, are you seconding it? Or you just, you just clarified it? You just clarified that for me?
Yeah, he just needs a second.
Okay. So I need a second. Okay, I have a second. Um, all in favor to approve the Budget Amendment Number Two? Say aye. Any opposed, no? This has been approved. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I'll just finish on, on this with, uh, and thank you for the time. I know it's late. Um, the rest of our, our meeting was spent, uh, just discussing as a follow-up, um, some of the budget items that are coming up, uh, with our county commissioners. And I would, uh, just kind of, my biggest note here is, I think the board and Mr. Dudley presented to us back in fall with our child nutrition services, uh, where we're running in the red. So at a loss, we're operating, um, that runs as, as a profit-loss enterprise. And, uh, Mr. Lucas had noted that in, in the joint meeting. But, um, what I would like the board to know coming out of committee is that the state caps that profit at 2%. So although it's set up to run as a enterprise where you can make profit, you really can't make the profit. Uh, in other words, to put it in my simple terms, um, since we have to outlay, you know, some local funds for, for child nutrition services and food, uh, we take all of the risk to the downside of losing, but we don't have the upside. Um, and that's the best way that I can explain it. Uh, the other way I can explain it is that the state sets the funding mechanisms up for child nutrition services, um, allotments based on ADM and not the buildings. So the more cafeterias you have, the more you got to staff, the more equipment. Uh, and, you know, it's, it's, it's state funding for, for part of it, uh, but it doesn't cover everything. Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation of that. Thank you. Next is Instructional Program. Mr. Sorenson?
No report this time.
Thank you. Marketing and, and Community Engagement. Ms. Watson?
No report this time.
Thank you. Policy. Ms. Whitaker?
The Policy Committee did meet on May 25th, and we are bringing several policies to you that will need to be tabled for 30 days, um, in lieu of time. I am not going to read these individually. They are available on board docs. Also, for the public to see, if you will log on to Stanley County Schools' website, go under Board Docs, you'll be able to see these policies listed.
Thank you. So again, these policies are being tabled for 30 days, and then we will take a vote on them or approve them at the next meeting. Safety and Security. Um, Mr. Dr. Lavler? Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have resolutions. We have two resolutions for board consideration and for our approval. Um, I will turn this over to you, Dr. Dennis.
Thank you. And before I begin, I would like to thank Superintendent Morse of the Greatest School District who provided language to help me craft these for us. The first resolution is by Stanley County Schools' Board of Education concerning the universal private school vouchers. Whereas the North Carolina State Constitution guarantees the opportunity to a sound, basic education for all children in our state, and according to Article Nine, the, the General Assembly shall provide by taxation and otherwise for a general and uniformed system of free public schools, which shall be maintained at least nine months in every year, and wherein equal opportunities shall be provided for all schools. And whereas the North Carolina courts have failed the state of North Carolina, per the Leandro rulings, is not meeting its constitutional obligation to provide the opportunity for a sound, basic education to all public students. And whereas House Bill 823, Senate Bill 406, Choose Your School, Choose Your Future, is a universal voucher program which is scheduled to direct billions of dollars of available private school funds to private schools. Further, private schools are not equally available to all students and have no objective oversight process for how they use public dollars. And whereas, unlike public schools, private schools can reject students based on discriminatory criteria established by the private schools. And whereas, providing public dollars to four separate schooling options, including traditional public schools, public charter schools, private schools, and home schools, does not provide a uniformed system of education for all students. And whereas, access to various education options is limited to many students based on factors, such as, but not limited to, availability of transportation, the need for special education instruction, the ability to provide breakfast and lunch, purchase school supplies, and parental engagement. And whereas, the vastly different mechanisms for oversight and operation of these four education options creates an uneven, uneven playing field. And whereas, the North Carolina Office of State Budget Management projects Stanley County Schools will see its state funding drop by $1,445,158 by fiscal year 2026, 2027, if this universal voucher program is enacted. And whereas, when state funding decreases, the percentage of per-people funding going towards fixed costs, which include electricity, water, sewer, gas, internet, fuel, et cetera, increases, and the amount of per-people funding goes toward educating students decreases. And whereas, the Opportunity Scholarship was established to provide an opportunity for students in low-income households to have a choice to attend a private school. And whereas, the new program proposed by both chambers removes all income caps. And whereas, high-income families already choose to attend private schools and do not need a public school voucher. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Stanley County Schools' Board of Education opposes any voucher bill or budget provision that does not include a household income limit as part of an eligibility criteria and does not meet the North Carolina State Constitutional Obligation to provide a free and uniformed system of public education to all students. And be it further resolved, the North Carolina General Assembly should create a new allotment to cover the fixed costs to operate school wisdom, school buildings that is not included in the per-people funding formula. And be it further resolved that the Chair and Superintendent are authorized to disseminate this resolution to members of the General Assembly and the Governor. And the board encourages parents, students, and other community members to contact their North Carolina legislators to implore them to abide by their own oath to uphold the North Carolina State Constitution, adopted by the Stanley County Schools' Board of Education this sixth day of June 2023.
Thank you. What is the pleasure of the board in consideration and approval of this resolution?
I would make a motion to approve the resolution as read by Dr. Dennis.
I have a motion to approve the resolution by Mr. List. Is there a second? I have a second by Ms. Watson. Is there any discussion, board members?
I know everybody's dead tired, but I'll make two comments. I looked into this, uh, voucher nonsense is what it really is. The vouchers are for $6,500, and the average cost for private school in North Carolina is almost 9, 95. So basically, this is a penalty for not being rich. Okay? Really, unless you can afford the extra $2,000, $3,000 per kid, you're not gonna be able to do it anyway. Personally, my own grandchildren attend a private school. It won't cover where they go, and it's below the state average. Their parents do not need this. Okay? I'm not bragging. I'm just saying that, that, that the income level cap, there's, there's no need to punish the poor, and that is all this is, is a war on the poor. And I, this is, I'm appalled that they even think this is a good idea, so. I'm just echoing what you're doing. I mean, everybody's tired. This kind of thing right here makes me mad.
Uh, Mr. Sorenson, I, I spoke to my husband about almost the same thing. I said, you know, when vouchers first came about, they were to help our children that were low-income, in poverty-stricken areas. And now it has evolved to, to this. And I agree with you 100% in what you said. Are there any other, um, comments or discussion? All in favor to approve this resolution for the Stanley County Schools' Board of Education concerning universal private school vouchers as read? Um, say aye. Any opposed, no? This resolution by the Stanley County Board of Education concerning universal private school vouchers has been approved. Thank you. We have one more?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's, uh, there's also a resolution by the Stanley County Schools' Board of Education regarding pay increases for teachers, bus drivers, and other school employees. Whereas the Stanley County Schools' Board of Education supports a competitive market salary to recruit and retain high-quality, full-time teachers and other school employees, including bus drivers. And whereas, inadequate pay is a longstanding issue for teacher and teacher vacancies that has increased dramatically. And whereas, at the beginning of the 2022, 23 school year, the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction reported 5,540 teacher vacancies on the first day of classes, a 40%, 46% increase from the 2021, 2022. increase from the 2021-22 school year. And whereas, the Senate budget proposal allocates approximately $407.4 million over the biennium for pay increases to all school district personnel compared to the House proposal of $1.068 billion over the biennium, a difference of more than $660 million. And whereas, the Senate proposal includes an average 4.5% increase in teacher pay over the biennium. And whereas, the Senate pay plan for teachers with 14 or more years of experience includes a salary increase of $200 per year in the first year of the biennium, an additional $50 per year in the second year. And whereas, the House budget proposal includes a maximum pay increase of 7.5% for all school employees, an average 10.2% increase for teachers, reinstating master's pay, and a 9.5% boost in salary for bus drivers. And whereas, at the beginning of the 2022-23 school year, 98 of the state's 115 local superintendents responded to a survey conducted by the North Carolina Superintendent's Association that showed there were 11,297 school staff vacancies across North Carolina, including 1,342 bus drivers. And whereas, districts statewide are facing a crisis because of the school bus driver shortage. And whereas, the Senate proposal includes a salary increase of 2.5% in each year of the biennium for school bus drivers, which is half of what is proposed by the House. And now therefore, be it resolved that the Stanley County Schools Board of Education opposes Edition 5 of House Bill 259, 2023 Appropriations Act, and favors Additions 3 of House Bill 259, 2023 Appropriations Act, that includes 10.2 increase in teacher pay over the biennium, a 9.5 increase in bus driver pay over the biennium. Be it further resolved that the Chair and Superintendent are authorized to disseminate the resolution to members of the General Assembly and the Governor. And the board encourages parents, students, and other community members to contact their North Carolina legislators to implore them to abide by their oath and uphold the state constitution. I do want to make one correction that I see that should be Senate Bill 259.
Oh.
No, no, no. Yeah, no, it's right, it's right. No, it's correct. Never mind. No, no, it's correct, it's correct. It's correct as read.
I just want to make sure, where you said whereas the House budget proposal includes a minimum pay increase, I think you said maximum.
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay, I just.
Okay. Sorry, reading too back-to-back.
Thank you. What is the pleasure of the board in consideration and approval of this resolution regarding pay increases for teachers, bus drivers, and other school employees?
I make a motion to approve the resolution as read by Dr. Dennis.
I have a motion by Mr. Lisk to approve. A second? A second by Ms. Watson? Is there any discussion?
I just want to say that, you know, we're well aware of the fact that these folks need better pay. We can't compete with our neighboring counties without it, and I just hope that this will go through. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment or discussion? I appreciate you doing this resolution for us, both of them. Dr. Dennis? I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor of the Stanley County Schools Board of Education regarding pay increases for teachers, bus drivers, and other school employees? Resolution as read by Dr. Dennis? Say aye. Opposed? No. This resolution has been approved. Now let it be recorded that both of these resolutions were approved and adopted on the 6th day of June 2023. Thank you, Dr. Dennis. Mr. Plummer?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. I bring to you tonight an item requiring action. Each year, local boards must formally vote on the Alternative Schools Modified Accountability System. The Alternative Accountability System is an alternative to the school performance grade. In your attachments, options A, B, and C are described on page 4. Stanley County Schools has traditionally selected Option B, allowing for the accountability to come from 20% student persistence, 20% school achievement, and 60% growth. We must also select an Alternative School Insufficient Data Option under ESSA. An alternative, all alternative or other eligible schools must have an insufficient data option. Again, Stanley County Schools has traditionally selected to use three years of data to calculate this rating, described on page 2. I ask tonight for your vote on both options.
So first of all, I'm going to ask for this. May I have a motion to approve Option B of the Alternative Schools Modified Accountability as presented by Mr. Plummer?
Make a motion we approve Option B as the Alternative Schools Modified Accountability System.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Poplin. A second? A second by Mr. Sorenson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? No. Okay, Option B has been approved. Now will you give me, Mr. Plummer, the motion that we need for that second one?
If you look on the bottom of page 2, the Alternative School Insufficient Data Option under ESSA, Option B is there, three years, use three years of data to calculate the letter grade for the school.
Okay, I need a motion to approve that Option B, which includes three years of data.
I make a motion that we adopt the three-year use of data to calculate the letter grade for the school under ESSA.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Poplin. A second? A second by Ms. Watson. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? No. Okay, this has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Auxiliary services, we might have already had that. Uh-oh. Okay. So, Dr. Dennis? This is our budget presentation?
This is. We've had a great board meeting thus far, so we hate to end a great thing. We're going to give you a presentation. I think, yes, okay, I hope you'll just drive it for us, if you don't mind. Some of this data we've provided, so it's not going to be anything new, and we just did some analysis. You're probably going to have some questions, so we're just going to go through it real quick if it can be brought back up. Can you bring the presentation back up? He's got it. All right. No. The one that was just out there. Is it on yours? Here you go. I'll drive it from here. It's fine.
I think.
Okay. So we all know, as far as funding goes, some of our biggest challenges are recruitment, retention of our employees. Being a rules system, we tend to, and a lot of systems do, tend to have a small pool of candidates, employees leaving our systems, neighboring systems for more money, and sometimes even cutting their drive time, especially when you live in certain parts of the county. Limited resources to attract and retain employees, and it's just hard for us to be competitive with our adjacent districts, even though some of those who might not have larger revenue sources. So I'm not going to read this to you, it's just for your information, and you can always access it later. But that's local funding per student for fiscal year 1920 and 2122, and this is reported through the North Carolina County Commissioners, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. So this is their funding source. All this comes from DPI, so it'll all mesh together. Oh, next. So I just want to give you a couple definitions to make sure we're speaking the same language. When I say ADM, that just means average daily membership. An average daily membership is the total number of school days within a given term, usually a school month or year, and that a student's name is on the current role of a class regardless of his or her being present or absent. It's the number of days in membership for that student. So if that student's in membership, they get counted as one, and so on and so forth. At the beginning of the school year, we had approximately a little over 8,600 kids in membership, daily membership. So when I say per-people funding, what I mean is the amount of local current expense given by the county to educate students in a county that they attend in a public school, you know, where there'd be traditional charter. Now, when I talk about per-people funding, and today, we're going to talk about Stanley County Schools' kids as our local current expense, because I've seen the County Commissioner's Association do it both ways, but we're just going to be talking about our traditional schools and our local current expense. We'll talk about charter some, but I'm not trying to interchange them so much. Pass-through monies, our monies given to the district in local current expense, this earmarked for a budget of another county entity. So essentially, it would be like, I'm giving this money, but I'm just going to make an example, I'll give you the example later, but say I'm giving this money because I have to hire EMS to be somewhere every day, and then, you know, I parse that out. Well, that money just needs to be given to EMS, and us not have to be the funding agent for that. All right? So right now, according to the Association of County Commissioners, DPI, that Cabarrus County, you see their numbers, 28, Union's, that's the funding ranking within the state. So Cabarrus at 2,408 ranks 28th, which we knew they would be higher. Union 31st, Rowan 36th. Montgomery right now sits at 37th. They fund their kids at $2,269 per student. Anson is 83rd in the 1920 year. They are a Tier 1 county, which means they do receive more money, more low-wealth money per capita than we do. Is that correct? Okay. And Anson was at 1,637, we were a little lower at 1,634. That puts us at 85th. Now, if you'll fast forward to the 2021 school year, Cabarrus and Union, Rowan, all of them, they stay relatively where they are. Montgomery is funded at 2,166, which is 36th. Anson is funded at 1,903, which is 50th. Again, they're a Tier 1 county. And Stanley County's funded at 1,363, which is 94th in the state. Any questions up to this point before I move on? Yes, ma'am?
Will you please go back to that? I just have a comment to make. It is appalling to see that our surrounding counties, and some I understand with their funding per student, but when you see Montgomery County at $2,166.36, ranked 36th, you see Anson at 1,903, ranked 50th, and you see Stanley at 1,363, ranked 94th, it is appalling. And I hope that with the resolutions that we have done, I hope that people who are watching this, that they see that we are working hard, we're trying, but this is unacceptable to be 94th in ranking.
Dr. Dennis, just to clarify, because I think I recall correctly, but the most recent data that we have from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners in their 2022 report is that 2021 school year.
This is the most current I have from the County Commissioners Association. We'll pull up a slide in a minute that gives some, this was just released not too long ago, maybe a month or so ago, from DPI that's going to give some other numbers. They're not in a ranking system yet, but I will give you a few numbers here in a second.
Okay, but just so I.
But that is, yes, sir, to answer your question, that is the last publication, and I checked today that they've released with these numbers.
Okay, so for, as far as the County Commissioner's Association goes, their most recent data show that we've moved from 85th to 94th in the state, and there's 115 school districts, I think, so we're.
That's correct.
Kind of last, we're 50th, I think, as a state in funding nationally, which is last place, and then we're nearly last place in local funding.
Yeah, the 50th is kind of a funding with the ability to fund. Not necessarily you're the lowest, but they put together a formula that says your ability to fund, and they base that on how well you fund, if that makes sense.
It does, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Dugan and Dr. Dennis, Montgomery, when I look at the most recent County Commissioner slide here, where they're ranked 36th, so they're kind of in the top tier in funding locally, at 2,166. They're also a Tier 2 county like we are, and they receive similar funding from the state, it's just that they're substantially higher in local funding.
Yeah, I can't comment exactly to funding, but yeah, what you're saying is correct. They are a Tier 2 county like us, and as far as, if you look at their rankings, they, yeah, they'll be closer to us than we would to some of these other counties. Next slide, please. Yeah, that works, too. So what I do have is, so when you look at the school report card from SAS and DPI, they also give you a per-people funding mechanism, and this is from the 2021-2022 school year, it's the most recent, and you can go on the SAS's website, and if you pull the district tab, there's a district summary, it's at the bottom of the district summary. And at the bottom, it does indicate that North Carolina averaged $2,457. Of course, Cabarrus, Rowan, and Union being lockstep of what they normally do, they stay within that 2,300, 2,600. Montgomery went up just a smidge based on where they were the first year that I was talking about, which is 2,265. Anson is up to 1,667, and we're below Anson at 1,634. Any questions on that? Those numbers should be fairly accurate.
Okay, and just so, like DPI is using the same sort of formulas we think as the North Carolina Association.
Yeah, it looks at, it looks at the association move from using their formula, which is unweighted with charter number, to DPI's formula.
Yeah, and it's basically how they're calculating this, if I recall correctly. It's money coming in locally from our county that comes out of the commissioner budget allocated to our schools.
It's the current local expense, not the capital. Yes, it's just the current local expense.
Excluding the capital, divided by our average daily membership.
That's correct. And the average daily membership is calculated through child nutrition. They get that number at the end of the year. It's generated through a report, so you won't know, you can't tell until the year ends out, everything's reconciled, and then those numbers get reported.
Okay.
But, yeah, we won't know till what this year's going to be until the year concludes.
So it's showing that we're.
When? He said, Mr. Dugan said by October, November, we should have those final numbers.
Okay, thank you.
So I just threw together some numbers. Right now, the county's budget is giving us $15 million. You'll see that number doesn't change. The only thing I change is students. It looks like they got a number of students based on a PMR from maybe March, which is 8516, and gives a per pupil of 1,76143. I do want to say this before I move into the next number, that these are just projections because you don't know. Again, you won't know the number until the end of the 2024 school year into, would say, you know, into the next year almost, but I know at least.
It's based on the county manager's projected budget.
Yeah, it's based on their projected budget. Yeah, feel free to jump in anytime. Yeah, based on the projected budget, that's the number for the projected budget. So projected local education funding per student. So that's the projected amount we would get, they're using that as a projected number to project an allotment, which is hard to do, and I'll tell you why it's hard to do, is because we got a projected number from the state. Well, what's the projected number to give me at the end of the year? Was it around 8,400 or, did they say ADM? Yeah, yeah.
We were allotted this year based on 8,377.
So, yeah, so 8,377. So we, yeah, so eight thousand three hundred seventy-seven, but yet the state had to give us more state money because we ended up with well over a hundred, I think it was eighty-six fifty-something that we ended up. So that's quite a discrepancy. That's almost three hundred kids. So I'm going more toward, I'll have maybe three hundred kids I did this year, because now DPI is saying you'll have eight hun, eight thousand seven hundred seventy-two. That is their number, projection for us for funding for next year, correct?
Correct.
Correct. So I just use that formula for what DPI has given us, and that gave me about seventeen hundred and ten dollars. So that's what we kind of figure is maybe be in that ballpark.
Let me make sure I understand correctly. So the SES, Stanley County Schools' projection, the state's going to fund us based on eight thousand seven hundred seventy-two.
The, the initial funding will be on eight seven seven two. If we dip a hundred below that, they'll take some money back. If we go over a hundred, then they start looking at additional funding.
Okay, and we are, um, getting funded locally on a number a couple hundred or so less than that? At eighty-five sixteen, is that correct?
That is the amount that is used in the, um, County Manager's recommended budget, is the eight thousand five hundred sixteen.
Which looks like the number taken off maybe even the March or some PMR.
If we go to eighty-eight hundred, do we get any additional appropriation from the county throughout the year?
They would have to approve that.
Their Commissioner Board would have to approve our growth, possibly.
They would, if they, if we needed additional monies, um, they would have to approve that. So like, when all the teachers and everyone get the raises after budget were passed, you know, we still have people who do not fall under state monies that we have to pay. Every county does. And so when you start paying those, we actually didn't, we didn't ask for the money. We took and went out of our local current expense to pay those salaries and those benefits of those individuals. Or I, I should say, the, we, we had to match their pay with what the state employees are paying. I can't tell you, you're a teacher pay, or a staff member paying under state, and even though you're local, which a lot of people follow in their local, then I'm not going to give you the same raise. So we have to pick that up.
And if some of these students, um, again, correct me if I'm wrong, some of these students, like, for example, if we hit eighty-seven seventy-two from, from where we're at now, but we're funded locally at eighty-five sixteen, and given our K-three class-size mandate, if that requires us because of that, those extra students to have to hire a teacher, but it doesn't meet the formula to be allotted the money from the state, then, then we have to fund that out of local current expense.
That's true, and you also have to take into account, we may have some additional-
Since I quite possibly can-
Opportunities with, exactly, with the fourth and the fifth grade as well. But yes, uh, if I have to make a new class, because we'll just say, I'll take any school, Aquadale, first alphabetically. So if Aquadale has these two classes, and they're sitting at, we're wanting to say the average, we'll sit at the max they can have, and we have to create another class, uh, that money ha, will come out of local, I mean, it's not a part of the allotment. So we have to find another way to pay for that teacher.
Which means we have to pull on the money that we already have, that we had earmarked maybe for other projects or other uses, or we've got to go back to the County Commissioners, since we have no taxing ability, ask for more money to help fund the growth.
They would have to approve any additional funding if we do increase our student numbers, yes. Only the state automatically makes that adjustment. Even the adjustment they make, it's not the full amount, is it? It's a partial?
If you, um, if you're, um, if you're over a hundred, uh, or if you're under a hundred, it's fifty percent of the allotment that, uh, that would carry for per child.
Yeah, just to, but, but they do give us additional funding, it's just not funded at the full amount. If they would have, if they would have estimated our number at that prior to the school year.
Have the Commissioners in the past ever come back and made an adjustment to an allotment?
I cannot answer that. During my tenure, we have not come and asked. We just, we just kind of took it and paid for it our own. Next slide, please. Oh, well, no, no, go back, I apologize. Now, just for fun, what I did was I added the charter numbers in there, too, because we have about four hundred and ten. I think the county, it's four ten, four ten twenty charter kids. I used four ten. Because what the state and all those, these people do not do is they don't configure that I can find out. I've had some people tell me some different stuff the past couple of days, but right now, it doesn't look like that they're adding that into our funding formula. So when, you know, you say we get this amount, we got to add the charter schools in, and just to tell you what the real number will be, once we take it out, it's going to be closer to sixteen, because we have to take out the money and send it to the charter school for their cut. And that's a lot of districts, that's not just us. And some get hit harder than others. Some districts have very little, uh, amount of students to go to charter schools, some have many more. And so it can look a lot of different ways, but, you know, what, if you're really looking, if you want to really have a real look at what each Stanley County School kid does in the Stanley County Schools District, not just Stanley County itself, yet it's just something, another number to look at.
So you're saying out of the fifteen million that we're allotted locally, we've got to pay charter students out of that?
They will get their part of the funding out of local current expense, yes.
Our actual cut of that is much lower.
Yeah, once we pay the charter, yeah, because we have to give them their portion based on what the calculated per-pupil allotment will end up being. And I think it used to be-
If we lower our total funding, actually, to Stanley County Schools coming in, and we actually increase the number of students from some of the growth that we're seeing, and our, if I'm doing the math correctly, our per-pupil allotment goes down.
That's correct.
For the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we're roughly about six hundred and fifty, the six hundred and sixty thousand dollars will be going to charter schools out of our local current expense.
Wait, will you repeat that? How much will be going?
In the twenty-two, twenty-three school year that we're ending up right now, uh, roughly about six hundred and fifty to six sixty will be the amount. Of six hundred and fifty thousand to six hundred and sixty thousand will be going to charter schools for the number of kids that we've served, or that they have served this year from Stanley County.
That's our charter number.
And that's to all charters, not just?
Yes, that's, yes, not just the charters that exist within your county, but, you know, the way the law works, as long as you can get a transportation, you can go to any church, you can live anywhere. You can go, live in Murphy, go to Manio. Not that it happens, I'm sure, but anyway, that's how it works, as long as you can get the ride. So, um, some charter, you know, just depending on how it goes, as far as the monies, we take out, um, we take out the certain amount and give it out, but, you know, charter schools may get different amounts of money depending on what the per-pupil allotment for each different county is.
We, we have roughly about eighty kids that go outside of Stanley County Charter Schools.
So we just did some funding, go back to the one before. I just want to make sure I'm doing so.
The next one's the past three.
Yeah, 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 okay, go ahead. But that's without it. Oh, yeah, 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 okay, okay. I thought it was the next slide. So here's what we did. Um, the projected local education funding per pupil allotment, what we do is we have, there's different pass-through money that's, you know, that we get. It's mainly one source, I'm not going to say different, I should back up. There's, there's one source of pass-through money, and Terry can, feel free to jump in at any time. It's our SROs. When you look at our SROs, it looks like the budget for next year is going to be six hundred and twenty-three thousand two hundred ninety-one for our SROs, and that's the amount of money, um, for the ones that currently exist. And, and with this, the proposed, I should say, this is the proposed number, correct? It's the proposed, yeah, I don't want to say this is, you know, but as of right now, this is what the county's looking to pay for in SROs. The only thing is, the money is given to us, and we're used as the fiscal agent to pay the county, or I should say, the Sheriff's Department. So we make, is it, is it quarterly, is it?
It's quarterly.
It's quarterly. So we make a quarterly check cut to the Sheriff's Department. Now, there's a couple things that happen when you put it in pass-through funding. Number one, the charter schools get a chunk because it's local current expense. So the, how much was it?
About, it was about twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's about thirty thousand.
That would go to charter schools.
So I've got to give that part of the money to the charter schools, so I got to come out of other local current expense to make that back up to cut the check. Now, if the county just cuts the check straight into the Sheriff's Office, number one, I don't have to worry about cutting the check. Number two, I don't have to make that money up. I mean, that's, you know, that's a position. And number three, it'll change your per-pupil allotment, because it's not monies that I directly am using for my pupils. It's money I'm given to reimburse the Sheriff's Department. So if I could make a recommendation for the board, it will be to ask the county. I, I, I called two of our surrounding counties' superintendents and talked to another one I know well, and I asked him, I said, do y'all, does yours pass through the budget? They said, no, it does not. It's, the monies go directly to it. I can't say there's another, another one out there. I didn't call one hundred and fifteen. But I just don't see the reason that we need that money to pass through us when the county can just cut it straight to the Sheriff's Department. Another thing that clears up, that we've had conversations with, is I don't need to be in conversations on whether or not Sheriff's deputies get raises. Uh, they're not my employee. And I don't understand, but yet I'm holding their money. So there's clearly a confusion there between who actually is the funding and fiscal agent, and who makes, you know, these type of decisions. Because, you know, I, I don't think I need to be in that discussion, nor do I think anybody needs, you know, to really be in discussion on other departments, so.
So if I'm see, seeing that correctly, then because our County Commissioners or County Managers, someone who's responsible in that entity for, um, funding our school system has chosen to pass SRO funding through our school system, we are then further penalized because we have to pay out that funding. And it seems like, and I guess it goes back to your other slide, it's, and this has been going on for some time?
As long as I've been here, yeah.
That kind of bloats up some of the past numbers that we looked at on the few slides before, like nineteen-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. If, I mean, if my math is correct, then those numbers are actually incorrect because they're, they're counting SRO funding in the total amount of per pupil.
We have to have SROs, as you know that, and, you know, I wouldn't want anyone ever make the argument, well, you can spend it the way you want to. No, there's a number on the other column of the Sheriff's budget that is the exact number that cost us for the, so it's already, it's an item in their budget, correct?
It's a line, it's an actual line item un, under the Sheriff's Department budget for SROs. And, um, and like this year's five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So, you know, pretty much what it shows is you've got an expense of five hundred some, five hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and then you've got a revenue coming from Stanley County Schools back into that same Sheriff's budget for five hundred and seventy thousand.
So we're cutting the checks to the Sheriff's Department. I mean, just send the money directly to them.
And we're in competition with our surrounding counties, and I guess stacked ranked by DPI on the funding per pupil. Um, and we at least know two of the counties around us aren't passing that through. So their numbers are actually probably more accurate than ours, so that would actually widen the gap.
I can only say that I know for a fact that three counties that I spoke to do not pass through it, so their per-pupil allotment does, is not affected by their SRO funding.
And have we asked a county to, to redirect that allotment?
No, I have not formally asked.
This is a County Commissioner decision, not a Sheriff's Department decision, correct?
So it is not a Sheriff's decision, no, it's not. That's, that's not a decision they have, nor do I think it's a decision they've been involved in, per se. I just think that, you know, when you do the budget, if that's going to happen, I would rather you take the money directly from my budget now and pay them, so I don't have to lose the money to the charter school to make back up. They, just, just go ahead and cut them the check.
Is this something that we could request to the county before they approve their budget coming up?
I don't, I don't see why you couldn't. You're the school board, you can request.
So I'm, so I'm thinking, can we not go ahead? You've made a recommendation, and the way we've discussed it, can we not just go ahead and make a motion? But-
Do you want me to wait till I'm done with the presentation? Or do you want to do it now? It's up to you, I'm just asking.
Um, I, I like the fact that we're talking about it right now, and it seems like you've made that recommendation. We've had discussion about it. I would like to see if our board just take action on it.
And I've got one question before we do that. This number right here, um, this fourteen point three seven million, that's the net of, you know, not having the SRO funding pass through. Is, does this include, um, what we have to pay out to the charter schools?
I did it three different ways. Um, I did the number as it would affect their budget if they just said, I'm going to take it and just go ahead and cut the check so we don't put it in your current expense. And you'll see that first number, it's sixteen eighty-eight twenty-four. I did our DPI projection, as I did the previous slide, which puts it at sixteen thirty-eight ninety-seven.
With the fourteen three seven seven, does that include what we have to pay out to the charter schools?
Yes, the fourteen thirty, yeah. I only took the line item that, that was Terry giving me, the six twenty-three two ninety-one that's going to be earmarked for SROs. And, and I, I put that there. That's not, that number does not account for the number we'll lose to the charter as well, unless you look at the last one.
What's the ballpark on-
But that's just the per pupil, I didn't-
What we think out of the four point, fourteen point three seven million that has, how much of that has to go to the charter?
Um, our estimate was four ten, I think, Dr. Dennis, is what you used. Four ten was the estimate that we had that we used on charter schools. So you'd have to take the ninety-one hundred, uh, the nine thousand one hundred eighty-eight students divided into the four, fourteen million, and then multiply that by four, four ten, and that would be the amount that would be going to the charter schools.
Okay, so you mind if I do that math real quick?
Go ahead.
Okay, I just, I'm a numbers guy, my wife's here, and she knows how anal I am about it. So if I just say, um, you said fifteen sixty-four dot seventy-seven times four hundred and-
That'd be about six hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, that would go to charter schools.
Okay, so for, let's just make round math here of their estimates. So I'm just going to use fourteen point three seven seven million dollars, fourteen three seven seven. Uh, and we said six forty-two, six hundred and forty-two thousand. So, um, so out of our total allotment, just to make sure I got this correct, of roughly fifteen million dollars in our County Manager recommended budget, uh, that included roughly six hundred and twenty-three thousand, um, of pass-through SRO funding, and that includes roughly six hundred and forty-two thousand of pass-through charter school funding, which nets out what's coming to Stanley County Schools at approximately thirteen point seven three five million, is that correct? And if I divide that number by what DPI is projecting, because I think we looked at the last, um, month, and it was eight thousand six hundred and seven, but, um, we've seen higher numbers throughout the year.
That was our two-day.
Yeah, so if I just-
Oh, excuse me, two month, two month, those are two month.
I just used DPI's projection here. I'm coming out at one thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars rounded. And what was the, uh, which is lower, so one thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars is what we're kind of ball parking here, uh, on this estimate. And when I look back at, um, the DPI, uh, information, uh, on the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, where we're stacked ranked, and then the, um, you know, sixteen thirty-four, which we're in last place of our surrounding counties, uh, and then I'll look back at the National North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, most recent published year, we are ranked ninety-fourth out of one fifteen at a whopping one thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars. It looks like per what we were funded last year that we're possibly lowering? But it's hard to tell?
Well, the projection you'll get from DPI will probably look up, because we'll have some more student, I think everybody's going to be up a little bit, uh, because there's more revenues coming in and some things like that. That's if you want to, like, but, you know, you look at the way that the state does their numbers, they don't take into consideration charter schools and a lot of stuff like that. They just give you an end-of-the-year number and say, this is your per-pupil funding. So while it is a per-pupil funding for the district, it's not really, and that's why I just give you those extra numbers, not, you know.
Sixteen thirty-four, we think with DPI is just counting our students.
That's correct.
Right, so sixteen thirty-four-
Sixteen thirty-four would just be counting our students.
Our math is, again, just ballpark estimates here.
It was eighty-one eighty-nine, was that right? It was right under eighty-two thousand from that pre, from that previous year, yeah. That's right.
Yeah, so if we're, if, if we're correct in, in-
And I think the current-
If I'm correct in looking at this data for the year twenty-one, twenty-two from DPI, um, at a funding amount of one thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars that is based on solely Stanley County Schools students and local funding, uh, it looks like we're going backwards at one thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars per, per student. Meanwhile, our county revenues have grown, uh, our system has grown. Uh, we've had inflation and costs have gone up. We have bus drivers that we need to pay. Uh, we've got teachers and mandates and K-three class-size mandate. Uh, we also have a class size four, five mandate coming down the pipeline. Uh, this frustrates me, uh, board members.
And just to add to that, I know that there's been some talk at the state level of even taking, um, charter school pass-through out of, of local budgets and putting that, um, where the Commissioners would actually just send that straight to the charter schools. So it would make sense, um, hearing what I've been hearing at state legislation, to, um, go ahead and ask that this also not be pass-through.
Yeah.
Uh, just so you guys know that that is something that has been taken up. I don't know that it's- I don't know that it's.
That doesn't make a lot of sense. Yeah, just get the pass-through and all of it, and let us know, this is how much money you have to work with.
And there's a lot of time, I don't know that most folks know this, but Mr. Duddy spends a lot of time, um, uh, calculating all those charter school fund, and, cause he, like you said, each county is different, and so, um, there's a lot of time spent by him and his staff, uh, getting those numbers and sending those checks, and, um, just a lot of, um, legwork there also.
So the last thing I'm just, we're just gonna.
Did you want to give the motion?
I'm sorry.
I think she's wanting to go ahead and do it.
Uh, can we go back to that previous slide?
Yes, ma'am.
I just feel like we need to take care of this right now. I don't know if other board members do, but I feel like that we just need to go ahead as a board, um, make a motion that the SR funding does not, it, it doesn't pass through, that check doesn't pass through Stanley County Schools. It goes directly from Commissioner to Sheriff Department. So I would like a motion.
Um, I would make a motion that the, um, county, county commissioners, county manager of the county, um, direct the SR fund, SRO funding directly to the Sheriff's Department and not pass through our budget.
Have a motion by Mr. Lewis, is there a second?
Second.
Have a second by several people.
About forty and everything.
Any more discussion about this?
I would just like to also say that, um, you know, again, um, with them not being our employees and, uh, the salary situation, it just, it seems like.
Makes sense.
Seems like a better fit for it to, um, go straight through.
And we need more of them.
Yes.
I mean, we, we need them into schools.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Okay, this has passed.
So.
This has been recorded, correct? Thank you.
The last thing I, I was asked to do is just put together some, look at some increases and some trends, I should say. So I didn't count the first line, but I did the, um, the revenue comparison for the last five years, which was seventeen to twenty-three. I, I didn't do twenty-two, twenty-three because we just looked at the amended budget, and as of April thirtieth of the amended budget, it looks like, uh, revenue is gonna be eighty-seven million, is I correct on that? Okay. So, but as far as budgets that have been, you know, completed and, you know, the fiscal year is over, if you take seventeen, eighteen to twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, you're looking at a twenty-two percent increase over five years. You need me to stop, Terry?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
I thought I had that sheet.
Oh, yeah, no worries, I saw it. Um, so if you look at the Stanley County fund balance history, uh, we, we're up twenty-two percent revenue, but over the past five years, you're up forty-seven percent in fund balance. Um, going from twenty-five, you know, almost doubling it to forty-eight, almost fifty million dollars. What's next? If you look at Stanley County Schools funding history over the past five years, we're up fifteen percent in local current expense. That's just local current, right? I didn't pull the other one, yeah.
Are you saying that we're not, our funding on a year-over-year basis over this time period, um, that we're, uh, not, we're, we're losing our piece of the pie as our county has grown?
I'm saying as a five-year trend, you're not getting, you're not growing proportionate to the county's revenue, and then you're definitely not growing to the fund balance because the fund balance has doubled.
What was that fund balance again?
It was almost fifty million.
And we asked for, um, I think in our budget request, we asked for another two million dollars.
Let me, let me get to that shortly, shortly. So I did put pay scales on here. Our certified supplement right now is five percent. A lot of nearby school systems, especially to the west, they're working around twelve. Um, our principal supplement is, um, it's a graded scale, it's not my favorite, it's what we had, um, but I'm not really, not positioned to change it quite yet, but it's three fifty-eight to five seventy-seven, depending on the size of school. You know, of course, high school's gonna get more because they have more going on, more students. Uh, some, uh, surrounding counties are, uh, looking at eighteen percent, or that'd be about fourteen hundred dollars a month for a high school nearby. So if you're a high school principal in some of these counties, you're getting eighteen percent, uh, you're making fourteen hundred dollars a month instead of five hundred and seventy-seven dollars a month in your supplement. That's not your pay. So, you know, pay, of course, is negotiable as well, so it could look different. You could get extra supplement.
So I'm, I'm gonna stop you for one second, if that's okay? So you're saying that our certified supplements and our principal supplements are relatively about half of what our neighboring.
And I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna be honest with you, those are some of the higher-end districts, they are, you know, but they're neighboring districts. And, you know, but you, you have to, you have to take that into account. I can't compare everything with the tier-one county I connect to or stuff like that, um, because this is what your reality is.
You know, are we losing, um, teachers, employees, principals, um, across the board? Are we suffering and losing, um, to other counties who are picking off, we're training our employees, uh, and then they're going to other counties for higher pay?
Yeah, I lost a couple principals last year, I've lost staff as well, bus drivers, teachers, and they'll tell me it's for the higher pay. The ones who do fill out the X interview, you know, which is not all on, some of them do, some of them don't, or want to do the X interview, some of them just wanna be done and, you know, leave.
With such an employee crisis that we're also having to recruit and.
I'm just, I'm gonna say this, yes, we, 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 we have a hard time recruiting. Um, when we were looking for a football coach and stuff, once we found out what they were paying, we went through numerous, numerous, numerous iterations, until finally we just had to say, we're gonna have to do something internal. Um, I've had administrators say, no, that's not enough money, or that know that we don't pay as much, just call me ahead of time before they even, they're like, I'm not even gonna apply if you can't get me to this number, knowing that, you know, we have a hard time doing that, and you have to go into current expense to get those monies.
So like many small private businesses.
The only thing I will say that's been, that's seen some success is we were to hire quite a few teachers from out of county in Albemarle High School and such because we were using the ESAR sign-on, which was ten thousand dollars. That helped to recruit some people. But I only have that at hard-to-staff schools.
And that runs out next fiscal year, fine.
Yes, next fiscal year is the last year for those monies.
One more year, yeah.
So as far as classified compensation, I just gave you, in case you wanted it, uh, on the next page, uh, the supplement money is given by the county to pay our supplements, uh, our three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is what the county gives us to pay supplements. So to pay all of our supplements, I have to take one point seven five million out of local current expense.
And they have how many employees?
Uh, about eleven hundred, maybe? Everybody?
We actually have roughly about six hundred and fifty, uh, certified employees that actually receive that supplement.
Uh, you would just, yeah.
Because we just have, it's just a certified teacher supplement.
But all employees, I think we got right over a thousand.
Yes, almost eleven hundred.
Yeah, almost eleven hundred. So, um, moving along, increase in staff pay, we asked for one point two million for a one percent certified supplement increase, and that's really only moving us for five to six percent, but I think anything will be good. Uh, to create a new pay scale that will be, uh, more equitable for our staff, we got a lot of them, they're giving the thirteen and fifteen dollar increases, that's been here a long time, and they don't make any more money than some of the others.
And, uh, Dennis, if I can make a comment on that?
Please do.
Um, at the, you know, as I've, I've said earlier in some of our meetings, um, you know, the state adopted the new pay scale range that the Office of State Personnel uses. That actually needs to go, will need to be, legislature says that will go in, needs to go in effect July first of twenty twenty-four. So they're giving us next school year to accommodate our, um, classified staff to the existing pay scale that, that has been approved.
And so right now, we're getting an approximate increase in a proposed budget from a county of almost, uh, one point one million dollars. So I would still need more to get that staff increase in pay, but what I'm afraid of is that I'm having to pay monies out of contracted services because I can't recruit and retain people that go into state allotments, that that may take a chunk of that one point one million that I won't be able to even look at using for any type of staff pay. And again, as you can see, uh, to give everyone a raise, I need two point six million dollars.
And when you say like the contracted services, like for classified, are you meaning like, um, for example, if Mr. Bowers can't find a plumber to fill a position, that we have to then pay our cost?
If Mr. Bowers can't find a plumber, if I can't find a therapist, now it's gotten to where their, um, their teachers, you can actually, a classroom teacher, you can contract them, especially EC, because they're hard to find, and.
Say a lot of contracted services followed, or?
A lot of them do, yeah. Because first of all, EC's hard to find, and second of all, some of these people with some of these degrees, they charge a premium. And, you know, we could go offline and talk about it because some of them are, are separate instances, I'd hate to say in public, but, you know, there's a person, we pay for one of our students that may cost us a hundred thousand dollars a year once through contracted services, but if I were able to actually hire that out, it would be a fraction of that.
Well, and a lot of those are specialized services that are, if I'm correct, federally regulated. It's not like we can choose or not.
You can't just use anybody, they have to.
Offer this service.
They have to have certain qualifications to be able to render the service.
And some of these classified, if I recall correctly from our committee conversations, Mr. Duddy, on that new pay scale was to help folks like the bus droppers, uh, so that they didn't go ten years, for example, uh, where we've had these mandates come down on pay, and you have a manager making fifteen dollars an hour, and a newbie making fifteen dollars an hour. We had higher pay for, for certain employees and would help recruit, retain in, in that role.
The, the State Board of Education agreed, uh, reason why they have changed the whole, there was, there was so much study done that Office of State Personnel did on job, um, descriptions and job, um, opportunities that we have, that we have, that we, DPI was re, was reinventing the wheel. They were doing some of the same studies to have a pay scale that was through DPI. So what, what, to what I understand is, they said, why, go and, and recreate something that the state's already doing it, and we're all classified as state, state employees. So that's why that, that's come about, that we, the, the DPI, that the Department of Public Instruction and the State Board of Education approved to use the pay scale that the state, uh, Office of State Personnel was using.
Next slide, please. There's the pay scale, and, go ahead. I, I just wanna highlight one more time, and I, I know everybody's getting ready to go home. If you look at everything we're spending and how we're spending this through the state, we kind of match up with everyone. We're lower, um, in our central services, uh, than the state average, but quite a little bit, um, but our purchased services, which are our services that we just spoke about earlier as far as contracted services, are hi, are much higher than the state. And the reason being is, we're having to pay for people we can't recruit and retain. So, uh, hope, there's where I got all the numbers, just to show you, I'm not making them up off the top of my head, uh, come from the Association of County Commissioners, Stanley County Gov., and the reports from SAS, so.
I promise this is my last comment.
You ask as many as you want.
Can you go back to the slide before?
Of course.
Um, so when I look at Stanley, the, the bottom line for Stanley County Schools, the actual line there, central expenses, we're showing it, um, it's about four point two percent of our budget, uh, whereas the state average is about six point two percent.
Yes.
If I'm seeing that correctly, our central office, so folks that are there, our cabinet and, and, you know, making this system run, uh, we're underfunded by about fifty percent.
Well, I would just, the monies we were able to spend, I should, let me say, I would say the monies we're able to spend to fund other things, the way we have to run our central office, uh, our funding is about thirty percent less than the state average.
So for example, like when teachers need to reach out to finance because they've got a question on supplement, uh, and it's hard to reach someone, that's because we have a lot of people doing several different jobs.
That's correct. If you look at other school systems our size, you can see where there are other, maybe assistant HR and some assistants maybe in a finance or something like that role that these districts have, that we do not currently utilize.
And just to sit, uh, let you know, the, the previous pay scale, uh, the previous, uh, that, that is the existing pay scale that we're operating on right now for our classified staff. That is, as of December, is no longer there, uh, December of twenty-two. So this is what we're doing this year, but as of next year, we've got to revamp our classified pay scale to be effective July first of twenty-four on the new, um, that's been approved.
And just for the public who's looking at that, when we look at grade fifty to grade fifty-eight, which is the same minimum amount, um, that could equate to an employee going for ten years or more and not ever getting a raise. And so the effect for our local taxpayer and our school system here is when, uh, we are forced to have to adopt this scale, those state-paid employees are then gonna get a significant raise, uh, and we're gonna have county-paid employees here that we have to pay for to operate this system, and we don't have enough employees, clearly. That's gonna significantly impact our, our budgeting needs.
We have a significant, we need significant monies to help retain and recruit people. What we, we just do, and it's, a lot of it has to do with where we sit geographically, you know? But at the same point in time, if changes are made, then we're gonna be in a, we're gonna be in dire straits.
And I believe you or your department, Mr. Duddy, was working on, that DPI is providing some trainings and more information to where we can actually quantify, uh, our, uh, what it will cost us, um, in, in adopting that scale.
Um, presently, I have not actually looked and started creating a pay scale based on the new job classifications that, that's been approved. Um, it's still a minimum, maximum, but in order to, to, um, um, in order to create a pay scale that would work for thirty to thirty-five years, you need a step increase. So that's sort of the same thing that I created using this piece, pay scale twice, uh, in the last two and a half years, that where we need to, if you've been here five years or if you've been here twenty years, you're not making the same dollar amount as somebody walks in the door. And presently, right now, what we have is a scale that does not work. It just does not function because over the years, there's been such stagnant, and things have held to where we've got people that actually have to work twenty-five years before they even get a raise, and a raise might be five cent an hour on the hourly rate. So, uh, so that's, that's where, in order to get our staff where we need them to be, classified staff, um, you know, is that we look at it as a pay scale that every year you gets a, a little bit more of an increase, and then that would entice people to want to stay, to give us more seniority, to give us more, um, uh, experience. Um, you know, I, I'd be sitting here as a finance officer letting you know, you know, my staff that I have in my finance department, we have one that's been with the school system twenty-some years, but she's not been in the finance department twenty-some years. Um, and on the average, I may ha, I've got probably somebody, my staff is, the, the one that's been there the longest in, in finance probably has been there five years, uh, other than that one that's been with the school system twenty-some years. So when you look at what keeps your staff in, in your schools is where they can advance. Do I advance either by a increase every year for the seniority I give this school system, or do I move into a position that is a great hire? Maybe go from a grade fifty to a grade fifty-six. Right now, a grade fifty to a grade fifty-six, if you start out scratch, you're making the same dollar amount. So it doesn't matter what job that is, what, what would entice somebody to want to go to another vacancy?
So when will you begin to start working on this pay scale?
Um.
It'll be after.
It doesn't happen June the thirtieth.
Okay, but I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm being serious, I mean, we're gonna start working on it, correct?
And, and I, I laugh at that, Ms. Gibson, but there is actually, uh, in our summer conferences that we have in July, there's actually two classes that's gonna be addressing how we need to start.
Right.
To work this year, this upcoming year, to get, uh, approved pay scale, uh, for July first, twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Great presentation, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
It is a great presentation, so now I have a question for board members. Um, where do we go with this? I mean, the amount of time that's put into this, and we all see where we fall, we all see what is needed, so now, where, where do we go with, what, what are we gonna do with this? So that's my, that's my question I pose. Do we come back at our June twenty-ninth meeting, and we've all given it some thought, and we have a, you know, a, a, a plan of action?
I think we're at a point that we may have to adjust our. I think we're at a point that we may have to adjust our request, you know, to...
The county budget will be appro, approved before you meet again.
Yeah, they, they're going to approve, they're, they'll meet before we meet again.
So where do we go with this? I mean, I know facilities and finance, maybe you're going to meet, but...
Do they not approve theirs, is it 15?
If we need to make some adjustments, I think we need to, we need to make some adjustments.
I think it's more, you know, we need to full funding. And if I recall correctly, and, um, you know, from, uh, the county manager's budget request, uh, one of his slide decks showed that a 4.3%, you know, additional 4.3 cents in tax, or roughly thereabout, uh, would have fully funded, um, every request from every agency they're responsible for. Uh, and I'd remind the public that when the, um, past commissioner board did the revaluation, um, our tax rate was previously set at 67. Um, the commissioner board decided to, uh, lower that, um, to 61 cents. Uh, and how I have, um, how I view that is saying, well, it's, it's great, I want to pay less tax. Union County actually pays 58 cents. Uh, so there are lower tax, better buildings, uh, more money. They've had some development, obviously, along the Mecklenburg border, but, you, you know, in some sense, you know, our, our, our county folks could have went maybe like 64 cents halfway, and we would have been able to fully fund our request. So to some degree, one could call that mismanagement. I'm not going to go venture to say that. Uh, I want to work with our commissioner board. I want every person to pay lower taxes, um, at the same time, we, we have substantial needs in the school system.
Right. We want to fund our schools.
And the people need to know, and I think that's our power, is, is an information campaign. We are not a taxing authority. We don't have any ability to raise our own funding. We are completely dependent upon state funding, which I'd almost call that a pass-through. That comes in, and I relate it, and again, I've got a, I'm just a simple country boy from Stanley County, but it's like a co-pay system, like healthcare. The difference is, it's not so much 80/20 anymore. Um, our percentage we got to pay is, is going up with these allotment formulas, uh, and, uh, the percentage that the state is moving on to the county, which is kind of part of the, the major issue. We're a state-run school system. And I, I'll stop there, because this is kind of my comment on some of the stuff coming out of our, our senate in North Carolina. Um, if our listeners or, you know, families and students aren't following that, they need to. There's a bill right now that would, uh, have impacted weighted student funding model, and I believe Mrs. Poplin, that senate bill, 670, um, that if that were to pass out of the senate, that as we sit right now, we'd have approximately $5 million less.
Yeah.
So we think about all of our needs, that's $5 million less we, we don't have.
And it was very close to, um, making it in there. Um, it got pulled back, but I think it was $4.8 something billion dollars, so it would have been right at $5, you know, $5.
Let me ask this, are, is the finance, facilities, finance, are y'all, committee, are y'all planning to meet, or can you plan to meet before this budget is done by the commissioners?
It's a tight window, because I believe if I recall, um, hearing it last night, it's the 13th and the 15th is, or maybe the, one of those days.
13th or the 15th, I'm not sure. They have a workshop, and then they're meeting, and I...
On that Monday, the 20th.
Mm-hmm.
We just got to make sure that this presentation and the discussion that we've had, and I can see board members' concerns, that we don't, we don't drop this right here.
I'm just going to make, make one quick comment. The public hearing on the budget was last night. The notice was given yesterday morning, and if you read the newspaper, they said they were going to schedule the public hearing last night. They held the public hearing last night. So my, my impression is this thing's, it, the budgets are done deal, they're going to get together and just go ahead and work it. If we're going to do anything, we have to do it now.
Uh-huh. I'm going to leave this right now, but I feel like, Mr. Lisk, your committee, that y'all will continue to speak with Mr. Dudney and Dr. Dennis. And, you know, we've, we've had great information. To me, it's just, I don't want the commission, this information to just be here. I want to take action. So that's where I'm coming from.
I'm not sure. I'm trying. Um, this information, the majority of it, was presented to the commissioners in that meeting that we had with them, so they are aware of most of it. I think there were some minor adjustments to it post that meeting.
The County Commissioners Association and the, um, per-people allotment from the state were presented. Um, what was added was just looking at how different... Yeah, the trends, we did the trends, and just looking at, um, how per-people funding can be affected with some different numbers, and then they were, you know, with projections.
Okay.
And so, but, um, the, as far as the rankings and all that, that had been shared on our rating.
Thank you. Is there any more comments?
I just want to say, um, whether we just make a decision on something tonight, I want to make sure that this presentation is there on our website. Um, the first part of it did not stream, so the people who were watching, um, at home did not see the very first. I don't know how many slides they missed, but they didn't see all of them. Okay, so as long as it's there, because that is, that, that's, that's information that the public needs to be seeing. And you can hear it, but until you can actually see it in writing, I think the, the gravity of it just doesn't...
Hope we did, well, it's already out.
Well, and, and I know it's late, but I do also encourage our, um, families and parents to reach out to your commissioners, um, if you see something in this presentation that is alarming to you or something you're unhappy with, um, you know, uh, as they call us up, they can call them up.
I just, what was shared... Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Poplin. What was shared with the commissioners was the local funding purse unit from the, so, their association, go to next slide, please. Uh, just gave some definitions, they didn't have that, but every, they, we explained that. I just put it on there since it's going to be a, you know, a public document from this meeting. Uh, we looked at the per-people funding in 1920, and again, Cabarrus, Union, go back, please. Cabarrus, Union, Rowan, uh, 28, 31st, 36th, respectfully. Montgomery County coming in 37 with 2,200. Anson, which is a tier-one county, funds, uh, per-people funding is 1,637. Stanley was 1,634 to 85th. The subsequent year, which was 2021, uh, Cabarrus, Union, Rowan, they kind of stay around in the same area. Montgomery does as well. Uh, Anson moves up a little bit to 50th with 1,903. And Stanley is down to 94th with 1,363.
Can I stop you for one second?
You can stop anytime you need.
According to board policy, we're going to have to make a motion to extend past 10 o'clock.
Yes, you will.
So I need a motion for the board to go past 10 o'clock?
I make a motion, we extend the meeting past 10 o'clock.
A motion, a second by Ms. Watson, all in favor, say aye. No, okay, that motion has passed, so we're extended.
Thank you, Ms. Poplin. And, uh, so as going back, um, you see that Cabarrus, Union, Rowan, all in kind of the same situation they were the prior year. Montgomery at 2,166 is 36th in the state. Anson was 50th, it is a tier-one county at 1,903. And the reason we say tier-one is because they do get some low-wealth monies per capita that all the rest of the, um, the counties may not get. Stanley was 94th, and the state was 1,363. If you go to the last slide I'd like to present, we also presented this slide, which just showed what the average was with 2,400, uh, almost 20, oh, 2457. Cabarrus, Rowan, Union, they all fell between 23 and 2,600. Uh, Montgomery's just right there behind them at 2,265. Anson, uh, this is according to NCDPI and S, and SAS, uh, for 2021, 2022, will fund at 1667, will be right behind Anson at 1,634. Those are the numbers we know, those are the ones that presented earlier. And some of the other stuff is projections and/or looking at trends. And I won't go back over that right now. It will be posted on board docs. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just want to point one thing out real quick. We're going to lose, we've, we've probably lost the public if they're watching this. We, we've lost them five slides and 3,000 statistics, you know? If we put these, this information to the public, and you complain to us, we haven't got bus drivers, here's why. If we lose a million dollars, we're going to have to start shutting down programs. If we start putting things in terms that can relate to the public, you want music at your school, it has to be funded. You want athletics at your school, it has to be funded. That's what, that's what has to happen. The average Stanley County, uh, we're, they're too busy trying to raise their families to pour through a PowerPoint. Matter of fact, if you turn PowerPoint on, they turn off. We've got to put this in relatable terms, what's, what's, you know, what we're about to lose if we don't change the direction. And if, if I'm not mistaken, that their sur, their budgets are plus, or not their surplus, but their local fund is, it's expanding enough to cover this without going back to the, to the property tax rate, which nobody's going to do, I mean, if we're honest with ourselves. We got, we got to find a way to relate this, and we have to do it now. They're voting the end of this month for the budget. I think the 29th is what I heard last night.
Oh, and Mr. Sorenson, if that senate bill, 670 goes through, that's another $5 million. Um, you know, and it's a hit that we can't, we can't afford to take.
Right. You tell them, it's bill something, something, something. They're like, what does that mean? It means cause, Senator, for all representatives SAS, or say, if you carry this, you're hurting my kids. That's about, that's what we got to do. We got to turn this into relatable terms to the people. Not that Stanley County voters aren't smart or sophisticated, they're busy trying to raise their families. We, what, what I think where it's about to happen is the dam's about to break, and we're going to be the ones that get fussed at when the water's drowning out the, the programs at the schools. There's no way to, you can't fund if you don't have funding, and that's exactly where we're heading. So that's my, my point. Everybody wants to get out, and I want to get out too. My point is, we have to reach the public now in relatable terms, so they'll understand. These numbers make a huge difference in what we can do for your kids. Like, we had to combine classes at the early college, and I think that was a huge, huge gripe for a lot of parents. We don't have the bodies to man the classrooms, we have to combine classes. Make the picture that we're facing right now, that God help us if that 5 billion, um, 5 million disappears. I don't know what goes, that's supposed to be the last thing I say before I shut up tonight.
Well, that's another seven teachers.
If, if that happens, that means we're looking at a whole different kind of monster, because that's dealing with the weighted student formula average. That means you'll get a dollar amount per child, and then it'll be your decision on how many teachers you're going to have in a school, uh, based on the funding to those children. So if you've got teachers at a school, and I taught Dr. Dennis earlier today about it, a perfect opportunity is Millenport Elementary School. Not one teacher there is less than nine years of experience. So, and, and it goes right on up. So comparing that school with, with the salaries that's paid for teachers versus another school that might have a whole bunch of beginning teachers. So you see what I'm saying, you got the discrepancies there, but that's going to be put back in y'all's plate. Where will you determine that this school gets that much more money than this school because the higher salaries, or the higher utility cost, or anything of that sort that has to be done? But of course, you know, weighted student formula is coming from the state. It wouldn't be something that we'd have to face with local, but it's the whole, the whole, um, uh, aspect of how we're funding through allotment formulas. I'm not going to sit here and tell you our allotment formulas are the greatest thing since chicken noodle soup. They're not. There's a lot of things that need to be done differently with allotment formulas. They, they started in the 80s, and they ain't much been changed since the 80s. But, um, but when you look at, oh, we're just going to give you a pot of money, and I know there's states around us that's done that, and they have, may have been successful. But we can't go and say, okay, this is effective July 1st of 2023. Because for one thing, eyes, your finance officer has not been trained on how that's even going to look. Oh, I can say, oh, I've given, oh, they're going to give me $65 million, and here we're going to spend it this way. But you've got to support all of the programs that you're supporting now with that kind of money, or then, and then look at it, okay, are we having any cuts? And I'm going to tell you, honest, god truth, I was on a webinar this morning, uh, with finance officers in our region, and I've not seen one thing that the state, uh, legislation, DPI, whoever you want to say, I've not seen one time in my tenure as finance officer that if anything's ever been consolidated, there's not been some cuts in that consolidation. So, uh, so I, I just, I don't anticipate that the weighted student formula that's been, that's been asked or been, uh, in legislation that they're trying to get passed, that there won't be some other kind of cuts that's going to come down the pipes with that.
Yeah, and I apologize, earlier I'd misheard, but we're not talking about the seven teachers. If we get the fourth and fifth class-sized caps, that will add seven teachers. We'll have to try to find a way to fund that we've calculated.
Um, Hope, I know that we have this in board docs, but is there a way that this can run? You know what I'm saying? Like, it scrolls, it runs across our web.
Well, can I make a suggestion also, maybe?
Yes, ma'am.
That based on what Mr. Sorenson said, I can just create a sheet that really brings stuff down.
Yes.
So there's just not a lot of numbers all over the place.
I would agree, just something, something with some bullet points for the majority of the public that they can take a good five, 10 minutes.
But it's on our webpage. I mean, it's not something that we have to go to board docs. People have to go to that to find it. It's, it's there when they go to our Stanley County Schools.
Well, I'll put something together, and then we can get on the website.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
I think this is something that should be shared with our employees, too. Whether you send this whole presentation out to them, or whether we just send the one sheet that you're going to put together. But I think it's something that should be shared with all of our employees.
And, and I may be talking out of proportion, but I want to say this, I'm up, and it's after 10 o'clock, so I end up tending to say, talking a lot after 10 o'clock. But this is the recommended budget from the county commissioners, okay? In here, and I just like to print a lot of papers, so, but it states right here that we're having an increase of $124 per student, and based on the recommended budget. But that is looking at only 8,500 kids. So if, we're looking right now at 80, almost 8,700 kids that we have in this county. If you take the 8,700 kids that we're schooling, that if you take 8,700 and divide it in that formula, we're not seeing $124 per student increase. Your denominator is greater than, than what's being projected in a budget that has been presented on the website of the county commissioners. So anybody that likes to keep up with the county commissioners, they're going to look at this, and they'll say, oh, well, they're getting an increase, they're getting increased, but it's not. That's one thing I told Dr. Dennis when I printed this out, I said, Dr. Dennis, he's using the same amount of students in '23, '24 that he used in '22, '23. You can't do that, because we have seen a growth. I, we grow 250 kids this year. I mean, the state even recognized that and gave us additional $1 million because of that increase from what the initial allotments were. So, you know, you can't publish something like this that's going to become public record and say, oh, well, this is what we're giving y'all, y'all getting $124 more per child, which is equates to, I think it was 3-point-some percent greater than what was the previous year's funding? No, it's not.
Well, I think what also, like we said earlier, you can't make a, you can't say something's this, or you can make a projection that you won't know the answer to until you're in the next fiscal year. But we are growing, like you said, we are growing, so our income, or, you know, revenue source has to grow with us. If not, then, I mean, think of what that would look like.
Any other comments? I really appreciate that you put this together for us. Thank, thank you, and that we took the time to talk about it as well, discuss it. I guess I need to let you sit down, because I think the next thing superintendent comments.
I'm going to be very quick. Um, big day, June 9th. Uh, we'll see you there, graduation for traditional high schools, that will begin at 7 o'clock. I believe board members have been given the opportunities to attend the ones they want to attend. And, um, not a selfless plug, but June 18th is Father's Day. Celebrating honor to men who embrace essential of fatherhood, thanks fathers, father figures for devotion for their family, sacrifices they make. Um, I won't be redundant, but I guess I will a little bit. Just, it was great having the recognition, recognitions, excuse me, today, and to see, you know, all these students and staff that, um, are just such an integral part of our school. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lisk, I'm going to call on you first.
Well, I think I used all my comments in the last session, so...
I just thought if there's things that you want to say, or congratulations, then the rest of us can go ditto after you.
Uh, well, I will certainly congratulate, I'm, I'm attending the Stanley County Hall of Fame, um, dinner, and Greg Spade, who's a retiree, is, uh, being inducted, and, um, famous coach in several different... different sports, actually. And Al Andrew, who was a coach of mine, is being inducted. Late Woody Durham, and then, of course, two of our former athletes, TA McLendon, who was Admiral Woodall like myself, and Quan Sturdivant, who was behind, yeah, behind Mr. Dennis, Dr. Dennis over there. It is a good dinner, and we have some fantastic people here. The other thing I'd say really quick, the Westinley Colts girl softball team, Lily Hartzell is their left fielder, she's a junior, and I've known that girl since birth. She was a country girl, tried and true. Used to go hunting with us, and I remember when she walked around barefooted with dirt all over her face. So she dresses up nice as a junior in high school now. And my neighbor, Brooklyn Lovin, who plays first base, so they have done very well, and I'm very proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Whitaker?
Well, it's going to be impossible to congratulate every person that we recognize tonight. I think we are a very blessed county. We have some exceptional students and staff, and I am thankful for each and every one of them. I also had the opportunity to go to Duke and watch the Westinley girls softball team this past weekend, and it's a treat to watch them. They are a truly talented group of girls, that you can tell have some really team camaraderie with each other, and I truly enjoy being able to do that.
Thank you. Ms. Poplin?
Well, I just will also congratulate everyone that received any type of recognition tonight. I really enjoyed the presentation from Ms. Howell's class. And speaking of graduations, I think we have a new graduate up here on this board. Mr. Leisk, did you not just recently graduate?
I graduated high school in 1990.
Well, well, I mean, you graduated, or you got your...
I got my MBA.
Yes, okay, yes. You finished that up, so, but anyway, I consider that a graduation, that's a, that's a big accomplishment, but...
One of the older ones.
That's all right, you made it through. But, let's see, also, just looking forward to the Avid Training that's coming up in June, and being able to see that through, so, and happy early Father's Day to all the dads out there.
Is Dr. Levler still with us?
Yes.
Hey, Dr. Levler.
I think the main thing in listening to that meeting, we as a school board in the school system, we're an advocate for the public schools. It's great that people have a choice, but we are supporting and trying to make the public schools the best they can be. That's why it's imperative that you call the state representative and the state senator about the teacher raises and the classified staff raises, and then also this universal voucher, because it will hurt the public schools. So every parent or adult grandparent that has a child in the public school system needs to call these people as soon as they can, because they're going to be taking a vote in the next week or two, and it will hurt our schools. It will cut the amount of programming we have, and it'll just make things worse in general. I'm all about choice, but 80 to 85% of our students in school are going to be attending the public school system. This is the last meeting before summer, and everybody have a great summer.
Thank you, Dr. Levler, and we all wish you well.
Thank you.
Ms. Watson?
Well, what I can say is, wow, 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 what a great night we have had, with all our people coming in and what they've done, and I'm really, really proud of Stanley County schools, and I'm proud that I'm a school board member, and I love these people up here. And we need to know that we need the money for our students. And I hope our commissioners will really help us a lot. We need that, and we need money for everything that we do, and we love these students. I love this county, I love Stanley County schools, and I love these children at Stanley County schools, and I want them to have the best education they possibly, possibly can have. So with that, have a good summer, and see you next year.
Thank you. Mr. Sorensen?
Since we're after 10, I can talk all night, right?
Absolutely. I think I'm on my second charge.
I was going to say that I'm more than proud of what our kids do, what our teachers do, what our faculties do, our central office folks, but when I shook the hand of a hero today, Ms. Barbara Foster, the courage she showed back then is the courage we have to show right now as a board, when we address our county commissioner, our House of Representatives, and our senator, we have to show that same courage, because the battle's different, but these kids are still worth fighting for. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. I could just ditto what everyone said, and congratulations to everyone that received awards tonight. And I believe all of us, we started our day early this afternoon at the dedication of the classroom for Ms. Barbara Foster, and that was extremely just touching. That's, I agree, she's a hero, she's a pioneer, she's of nobility. And anyway, I appreciate board members tonight, I know we've gone a long time, our county office people, our SROs at the back. And then, also, let's see, what's my trend, will you show me that? I just wanted to say to our teachers that I thank them for all that they've done this school year, and it's all of our employees, just not our teachers, but I wish them a wonderful summer and a time of rejuvenation, and I wish our families and our children a wonderful summer. So, the date and time of our next board meeting will be Thursday, June 29, 2023, for special call, end of the year budget meeting at 4:00 PM in the Jean McIntyre Room. We will not have a July meeting, and then we will have a meeting Tuesday, August 1, 2023, for our regular board meeting, starting at 6:15 PM in the Jean McIntyre Room. I said we would not have a July meeting unless for some reason one has to be called. I believe it's Personnel and Administration, Student Services. Ms. Wood?
All right, the personnel agenda can be found in Board Docs. Section 1 as amended does not require action. Section 2 does require action, so I would ask for your vote at this time.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve section 2 of the personnel agenda?
Make a motion, will you approve section 2 of the personnel agenda?
Motion by Ms. Poplin. I have a second. Second by Ms. Whitaker. All in favor say aye, opposed no, section 2 has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. I need a motion to adjourn. Thank you that I didn't have to wait for that this time. A motion by Ms. Whitaker, a second. A second by Ms. Poplin, all in favor say aye, opposed no, we are adjourned.